Yeah. Time being seven thirty, Franklin zoning board of appeals will come to us.
This meeting is being held. I should have put my glasses on. It's hard style to read.
This meeting is being recorded and televised, the listing of matters of those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be held via Zoom platform. Please log in. Log in, you can find it online under the ZBA part of the thing. You can also join the meeting by calling your smartphone, one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. For those looking to view the meeting, it can be viewed live at this time on Comcast nine or Verizon twenty-nine. It is also streaming directly from Franklin TV's website. Visit Franklin dot TV and just click on the Town Hall TV channel. Time being approximately seven thirty.
First item on the agenda is ten thirty-four Pond Street, Vertex Towers LLC. Applicant is seeking to construct a wireless communication facility consisting of one hundred-foot monopole tower, one hundred and four feet to the highest at pertinent within a thirty-five-foot by sixty-foot fenced-in compound that is less than thirty feet to the rear yard setback requirement. The building permit is denied without a variance from the ZBA.
Can everybody out there hear us all right tonight? There was a little problem last night. Okay, thank you. Applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Please want to identify yourself for the record?
My name is Francis Pariisi. I'm an attorney representing the applicant Vertex Towers LLC and Verizon Wireless. We are here tonight seeking dimensional variances. I have a little presentation with the plans and everything. I'm just hoping I could set it up here. Let me just talk a little bit. Again, my name is Francis Pariisi. We're here tonight seeking a use variance and two-dimensional variances to construct a wireless telecommunications facility at one oh three four Pond Street. Some of you may recognize me. I've been here many times before, helping other wireless carriers and wireless infrastructure developers develop wireless infrastructure in the town of Franklin. As the board is aware, but I'm actually going to, a redification for the public, the town has a wireless zoning bylaw that limits telecommunications facilities to very specific areas, mainly the industrial zone and up along the route, uh, ninety-five, uh, four ninety-five corridor. And all those facilities have been built and have been operational. But what we've noticed over the last several years is that the wireless technology is morphing from a mobile technology to a residential technology. And so, uh, over the last several years, both Vertex and other wireless infrastructure developers have been building wireless infrastructure to get closer and closer to residential neighborhoods without having an impact on the residential neighborhood. The, um, we've been very active both in Franklin and in all of Norfolk County and all of, uh, all of eastern Massachusetts and quite frankly, all of, of, of New England, building wireless infrastructure. And, um, the reason I say that is because Vertex is essentially a real estate developer. We're not a wireless carrier, but at the same time, um, we can be much more sensitive to land use, the technical requirements of telecommunications carriers like Verizon, but also, um, um, other, you know, um, issues that come up in a, in a real estate development process, proximity to wetlands, setbacks and other issues like that. We've been very successful both in Franklin and in, uh, the surrounding communities and, like I said, throughout all of New England in successfully developing wireless infrastructure. The project here tonight is at one oh three four Pond Street. It's right behind the VFW Plaza. There's lots of other towers and infrastructure already in the town of Franklin. I had a little chart here, but unfortunately I'm not able to show you. But there's already towers. Is there any way I can get this to work, you know?
Yeah.
It would be a lot easier. I just have, I have like. It's on a flash drive right there. It's like, try that, it's not working. Oh, there it is. And then there's my flash drive right there. And then there's my presentation right there.
Yeah. And it's in the P D F, too. It's like.
Hold on right there. There we go, right there. Like I said, what's happened in the, in the wireless world is that we thought this was going to be a mobile technology and it's morphed into a wireless, I mean, a residential technology. The statistics are staggering. Over eighty percent of nine-one-one calls are made by mobile phones. Over fifty percent of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have cut the cord and are using wireless telecommunications as their only source of telecommunications. And what we've noticed over the last several years as a result of the pandemic, more people are working from home, trying to educate from home. And, uh, you know, there's just more and more demand for wireless technology. The other thing that's we found happening in the, the wireless world is that as wireless technology evolves and we get into more high-speed data as opposed to just a standard phone call and all the other streaming video and all the other types of things that our cell phones do, it requires a better quality signal. And in addition, um, we're, we're morphing into higher frequency bands, which, um, both provide digital and higher speed access, but at the same time, travel farther. So even areas of Franklin that had decent coverage five years ago, the, the coverage from the existing infrastructure is shrinking as we morph into the higher frequency bands and also the, uh, the higher data speeds. That, like I said, there's already, um, at least ten similar facilities throughout Franklin in a variety of neighborhoods, both residential and commercial and industrial, you know? And, you know, some of these facilities, some of, especially some of the older ones, are, are much taller than the proposed facility because we were trying to cover wider areas or as wide an area as possible. But what's happened is as we've developed that infrastructure, there are still gaps in town, but at the same time, we can cover them with smaller facilities. So you see there's several one hundred and fifty to one hundred and ninety-foot towers here in town already, all in residential neighborhoods. You know, this proposed facility, although in a residential neighborhood, is, um, only a hundred feet tall. And, and, um, um, this is a map showing where Verizon has existing infrastructure and where they have existing coverage. And it's kind of, I don't want to say it's misleading because there's different ways that we can, uh, convey this data. As you can imagine, uh, uh, being outdoors is not a structural impediment to wireless telecommunications signal. There's a little bit more of a structural impediment in a vehicle and then a greater structural impediment in a residential building or a commercial building or an institutional building like the one we're in now. And so what Verizon's trying to do is provide ubiquitous coverage throughout Franklin and throughout, quite frankly, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and, and America, you know, with reliable in-building coverage. And this is what's showing there based on the existing infrastructure. The, um, the, the lot itself is, um, um, unique in the sense that it's a non-residentially-used lot in a residential neighborhood. You know, we looked at a bunch of different parcels in that area and we're kind of limited with where we can go, just big, like I said, based on the existing infrastructure, based on the gap that we're trying to fill. And, uh, and as you can imagine, a lot of the area is wet. We actually looked at the abutting property and spent a lot of time, which is also owned by the, the VFW Hall, to try to site on that property. And it was just impossible to do with all the wetlands impact and all the wet, wetlands and, uh, uh, regulations that were forced to create. We, we talked to the Elks Lodge across the street and they just, because they've maxed out their property with parking and other improvements that they utilize for their use, they, they weren't an alternative. And all the other lots in the area are either residentially-used or undeveloped because they're wet. There's several lots just to the, um, east of this property that are, I think, either owned by the town of Franklin or, or under conservation restriction and are just swampland. So, you know, we were challenged in the sense that, uh, you know, and we looked at several other parcels up and down Pond Street and some of the abutting streets to, uh, to rule them out because of, uh, you know, it's definitely a challenge anywhere we go now in, as we get closer to residential neighborhood. The lot that we're talking about is about, um, um, an acre and a half. It's primarily used by the, uh, the VFW and associated parking. And the facility itself will be right directly behind the, uh, the VFW Hall. So, uh, the base of the facility will be surrounded by a stockade fence, but you're not going to see that because it's going to be directly, um, um, behind the VFW Hall and then surrounded by a, uh, a vegetative buffer of, of trees going through all the, the, uh, the northeast and, um, the northwest and south. The, uh, the facility itself is very similar to other wireless compounds here in town. It's basically, in this case, it's a thirty-five by sixty, which is a little small for our footprint. We had to kind of make use of what we had available. It's just a, a, a stockade fence. Inside will be some telecommunications equipment. Generally, they're like refrigerator-sized cabinets that you're not going to see. They don't make any noise. The benefit of, of the advancement in telecommunications technology is the equipment is like, the base equipment is actually getting smaller. We don't require H P E C or any noise generating, um, uh, mechanicals so that, uh, the, uh, the facility itself is, is quite benign and passive. There's an existing gravel driveway that, or, um, that, there's got a little bit of gravel to extend the driveway from the parking lot, but there's no new curb cut because we can use the curb cut from, um, um, the, the VFW parking lot. And these facilities are unmanned so that once we build it, there's about maybe six weeks of construction activity. There's nobody that works there. There's no water, there's no sewer, there's no noise, there's no lights. We're well under applicable FAA limits to require any sort of FAA mandated lighting. So, uh, and, you know, all the equipment is remotely monitored. Some of it can actually be remotely modified, um, uh, remotely and mechanically so that someone might come by once a month just to make sure the fence is intact. But, uh, from a traffic standpoint, it's, uh, de minimis if anything. The tower itself will be a monopole, similar to other facilities already here in town and surrounding communities. We, a monopole is kind of the compromise between the industry and, uh, communities like Franklin to be, um, as svelte as possible. There will be some mounting platforms at the top in which Verizon and in the future, other telecommunications companies will attach antennas. But all the cabling runs down through the, the, the inside of the pole to the base station equipment, which, like I said, will be behind the stockade fence and no one will see. So it, uh, uh, there's no external cabling. Like I said, there's no external lighting. Verizon doesn't require lighting because it's unmanned. If they need to do work at night, which is rare, if there's any kind of emergency work, they bring in temporary lighting, but, uh, there's no lighting on the tower or at the base of the facility. These facilities are also designed very safely. Like I said, we've got about a dozen similar type facilities in Franklin and thousands throughout the Commonwealth and tens of thousands nationally. And, uh, they're designed with very strict, uh, building codes, both provided by the state and also national standards, engineering standards. What hap, we haven't designed the foundation yet because what happens is after we get approved by the zoning board, we send the engineers back out. They do subsurface investigation to see what's there, whether it's sand or, uh, ledge or whatever kind of dirt. And then they design a foundation very specific to that location and then very specific to, uh, uh, the town of Franklin and Norfolk County with respect to wind and, uh, ice loading. And, uh, and then, and that's all done by engineering standards. And we've got lots of data to support, um, the, the safety of this. In addition, from a radio frequency perspective, uh, these facilities aren't designed to cover all of eastern Massachusetts or all of Franklin. It's just designed to cover a couple of amorphous square miles in and around the, uh, the Pond Street area. And so, uh, by way of comparison, AM radio, which, uh, was a technology that we've had for, I don't know, almost a hundred years at this point. You know, the, the towers in Needham, those towers are about a thousand or fifteen-hundred feet tall. And they're designed to cover, you know, you can get W B Z up in New Hampshire and out in western Mass and down in Rhode Island. And, uh, that broadcasts out about fifty thousand watts. This type of facility, based on cellular technology, at a much higher frequency band and at a much lower power output, is only designed to cover a little bit of Franklin. So it's, uh, uh, it's really just, uh, uh, I lost the slide here, but, uh, it's really just a couple of square miles. So they broadcast out at about a hundred watts as opposed to fifty thousand watts with AM and FM technology to try to broadcast a much wider geographic area. As the board is aware, we have to satisfy the criteria for variance. We, um, uh, we understand that, uh, under use zoning bylaw, which mimics mass state law, that, uh, um, we need to show that there's a hardship. And, uh, the hardship is owing to circumstances shape or topography of the land and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public or derogating from the purpose or intent of the bylaw. And, uh, as this board has found in many similar occasions, the fact that we're limited with where we can go based on all the other criteria, including the wireless technology, the base, uh, the, uh, the, the lack of alternatives, that we can't just go anywhere we have to go on size lots. It's a challenge to find willing landowners, especially in residential neighborhoods. Like we look for non-residential uses like the VFW. And, uh, you know, the, the desire to, um, manage the need for this type of technology, it certainly justifies the, you know, identifies a hardship and, um, um, justifies the grant of a variance. So we would ask that the board actually make the finding that there is a little enforcement that would involve a substantial hardship. And, uh, you know, given the, the, the small size, the minimal impact, the vegetative buffer, the, uh, and the lack of alternatives, that it really, there is no, um, um, impact on abutting properties or, uh, and certainly is in compliance with the zoning bylaw as much as possible. And then the last thing I got to say is the federal government is very involved in wireless infrastructure development. Almost thirty years ago, the, the government, anticipating the growth in wireless technology, adopted very comprehensive bylaws, uh, not bylaws, but statutes to encourage the, um, development of wireless infrastructure. And it was done at a time when we had one telecommunications company, A T and T. And what the government did is that we want to foster competition in the wireless world. So we, they issued multiple wireless licenses to use the wireless spectrum. They, they wanted to encourage, they recognized the great public safety benefit and the, um, um, the, the advantages of wireless technology over wired telecommunications. And what the federal government basically says is, you don't have to say yes, but you can't say no without sufficient reason. If there was, um, you know, a substantial impact on abutting properties, if there was too close to a sensitive use, um, you know, there might be some topics for discussion. But, um, and, and this is an issue that's been very heavily litigated throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and, um, quite frankly, the United States in general. And, and courts and zoning boards like yourselves had to struggle with it. And basically what the government says is that, you know, your bylaws can't have the effect of prohibiting wireless telecommunications. If there's a gap in coverage, which the data certainly supports, and there's no alternative, that, um, you have a hard time saying no to this type of facility. So, uh, and, uh, um, like I said, the, both the federal government and the federal courts have been very supportive of wireless infra, uh, infrastructure development. And, uh, I think actually involving the town of Franklin at one point and other communities throughout Massachusetts as well. So that was a very quick overview. I, uh, I would ask that the board grant the variances so that we continue to move forward. And the last thing I'm going to say, too, is that, um, um, given that we have great finance, I mean, I mean, federal encouragement to build these facilities, we also have great federal responsibility. Unlike any other project in the town of Franklin, we have to do very extensive environmental due diligence to make sure we don't have any impact on migratory birds and, um, endangered plant and wildlife species and, uh, Native American resources and things like that. So we still have some environmental due diligence to do. We have to make sure we have no impact on historical resources and all these other issues that the federal government deems significant. So, uh, so, uh, we would ask that the town grant the variances so that we continue our, our due diligence process with respect to that. And, uh, um, our, our goal at this point is to get through the town as expeditiously as possible, finish the, uh, the federal process sometime over the next several, um, months. So that's in a little slowdown right now. And, uh, you know, be able to construct by this, the time the winter's over in the spring. So I gave, I went way too fast. I know if the board has any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions from the board, Joe?
Joe, I'd like to speak on this. Being on the planning board for fourteen years and being now on the ZBA for about a year, I'm always skeptical about applicants when they come in, when there's a need, the hypothetical, everything that goes along with a special permit or variance. Being very transparent, I'm only going to offer it tonight. So I'm only going to give you what my experience was. I will not be able to vote on this, so I'm just going to give you some information. I'm the owner of a tow company in town of Franklin. We do all the municipal and town police towing. Anybody who's in the audience might remember, six, eight months ago, we were dispatched by the Franklin Police right around that area for an accident. Typical, you just show up, you tow a car. We get there, it was a pickup truck with a trailer hauling another pickup truck that got out of control, rolled over, took out the Midway Fire Chief's car. He was on his way home or traveling down Pond Street. And also did some critical damage to another vehicle that went off the road and blew us as hell. My guys show up. I don't hear anything. Trying to call them, can't get a hold of them. We have Verizon. Finally gets a hold of me once. I lose the call. It turned out to be three car carriers we needed there with three men. Because of no reception, my men could not communicate with each other in that area to clear the scene, which caused that road to be closed down for an hour and a half, two hours, which is very imperative for emergency vehicles to get through. Pond Street's a busy road. Had there been reception there, when my guys showed up immediately, we would have had trucks there quickly cleaned up, out of there, clean up the scene, had the road open for safety for residents as well as animals. I can tell you firsthand, the reception is horrible in that area. I can tell you firsthand, the reception is horrible in that area. Again, I can't vote on this, but I would encourage my members to take that under consideration. I have firsthand experience in that area with Verizon, with cell phones, trying to run a team to clean up the scene. Again, life and safety is what I would vote on. That falls to me under that category. Again, though, I cannot vote tonight, just telling the people in this room my experience in that area.
Sir?
You got a chance. You'll get a chance. We'll go to the audience after we go past the board. That's it for me.
So I wonder if we could touch on the telecommunications act. Should this board deny your variance? What happens next?
It happens from time to time. Because the telecommunications act is a federal bylaw, we don't go through the normal zoning board denial and appeal process through Superior Court. We go straight to federal court. And like I said, all we have to show in federal court is that there's a gap in coverage and no viable alternative. And, you know, the application you saw was that thick. We've done an immense amount of due diligence. And I'm not here to threaten that. I don't like litigation. It takes too much time, it costs too much money. But in general, the federal courts have been very supportive of this type of development because, you know, it's definitely a challenge. And, but, and, you know, we try the best we can to have no impact on anybody, but we can't. It's, but, and, but, you know, the federal courts certainly recognize the great benefit, what we just heard from the other board member, and the minimal impact on areas. You know, the other thing, too, I'd say is that, you know, given that there's so many other similar facilities in Franklin, it almost goes to show that there's really no impact, that it's not derogating from the intent of the bylaw. Because there are lots of other similar facilities already throughout Franklin that, you know, have been there for one, five, 10, 20 years without impacting the community, but actually great substantial benefit to the community with better telecommunications.
It's the impact, I guess, to the neighbors, right, that are living there and have to look at your 100-foot tower behind the VFW.
Yeah, you know, everyone thinks 100 feet tall is tall. And, you know, as compared to a residential house, 35 feet, it sounds tall. But it's all based on perspective and it's all based on, you know, where you are in relation to the world. Because we're set back a little bit from Pond Street behind the VFW, you're not going to see, you know, where the VFW is in the parking lot, you're going to see the top half of the tower maybe. But as you go to the lot to the south, as you're coming up Pond Street headed north, you know, that's all, you're kind of in a tunnel there with all the wetlands and where the river is and then down there. So you're not going to see it as you come up Pond Street to the, going north. And same thing from the south because, you know, even though it's a very substantially developed neighborhood, it's still a very heavily vegetated neighborhood. And then to the west, where there's, you know, undevelopable wetlands and then the abutting properties, it's still heavily vegetated. So, you know, no one's going to see 100 feet. So I can't say it's invisible. I've never made an invisible tower. But you're seeing the top portion of it, maybe. It's of the minimum impact and certainly great benefit.
Except for the person in backyard, that's not even the point.
We'll have a chance to ask all your questions. We'll go through the board.
Are we going to have a chance?
You'll have a chance.
What can you do to camouflage this?
You know, we've tried as an industry to do things. I had somebody in your position once tell me you can't put lipstick on a pig. And the point is, like, sometimes when you try to camouflage it, you make it look more noticeable, more voluminous. We've tried to make them look like pine trees. And in some areas, it tends to work. If you're on the side of a steep hill and you've got trees in the back, they kind of blend in. But in this area where it's kind of flat, you know, it's just going to stick up above the tree line in certain areas, it's just not going to look good. And what happens over time is that, you know, we've built several trees. There's one on the Mass Pike going eastbound, it should go right into Weston by just before where the Weston Tolls used to be. And that's been there for 20 years. And all the pine needles have fallen off because they're fake pine needles, they're just fiberglass. And they start to look like Charlie Brown Christmas trees. There's another one going out west on the Mass Pike, just past Worcester in the rest area, right behind the plaza where the McDonald's is. And again, that's been there for 20 years. It's just, you know, attempts to camouflage have been failures. And, you know, in this case, you know, by going to a monopole, the monopole is a galvanized steel. It's basically the same thing as like a guardrail you see along the side of the road. It's non-reflective, it's benign in color, the antennas are benign in color. So it doesn't reflect, you know, the galvanized kind of dulls over time. So it, you know, like I said, the design is kind of the compromise we've already done between having technical capability and as most aesthetically pleasing as possible.
Emergency response. I don't even know, whatever you would call the Verizon things there. I mean, does the police department, does benefit the police department or fire department in any way?
In two different ways. I, most police and fire drive around with their own personal cell phones, and that's a secondary form of telecommunications if their radios don't work. And most police and fires, including the town of Franklin, have their own internal radio network. Because it kind of dovetails what we're trying to do, if the town of Franklin were to ask, could we put a repeater or an antenna on this, we would say yes. Because, one, their type of antennas are a lot different than the type of antennas that Verizon and other telecommunications companies use. But it's also a goodwill gesture. So if the town were to ask us to put antennas, we would just say yes.
Okay. One last question is, you mentioned earlier about working emergency work at night with lights. What type of emergency work would be needed?
If the equipment malfunctioned, for example. It rarely happens, like I said, it, the point was is that there's no lighting. And so there's no blinky light on the top, there's no strobe light at the bottom, you know, that illuminates the backyard all day. There's nothing like that. And if they ever had to do work at night, which would be rare and not part of the norm, they'd bring their own lighting in. So it wouldn't be something that, it's, you know, I can't say because, but the equipment was malfunctioning and it needed to be on the air or, you know, but that's the exception not the rule.
Mr. Chairman? Maggie, any questions?
Are there plans to have like generator on the premises?
I believe so. Yeah, if you look at the plans there, there's a small equipment pad with some refrigerator-sized cabinets and then a small generator. These type of facilities have three forms of power. Their primary power from the street and we'll utilize the existing power that comes through the VFW and just tap into that. And then they have backup batteries. So if there's a short-term power failure, you know, 12 to 24 hours, the batteries kick in. And if then there was a long-term power failure, the generator would kick in. But the generator, you know, wouldn't be used unless there was a very long-term power failure.
And these alternate sites, like how, like have they all kind of been exhausted as options? Or I know you talked, kind of said there some are wetlands and some are residential?
I mean, if you look at the area that we're in, you know, just to the north and west are, is very heavily residential. Really, the only other viable, potentially viable options was the land to the, to the east, some larger lots. But as you can see, a lot of those are landlocked and they're all wet. And that's why they're big lots that are undeveloped in the town of Franklin is because they're wet. And even going to the south, the VFW owns the lot immediately to itself. It's a little bit bigger than the lot that they occupy for the VFW hall. And that's all wet as well. And then the only other, you know, commercial-ish lot in that area is the Elks Lodge across the street. And we had substantial discussions with them and they just said, no, they can't accommodate. I can't force them to do it. They utilize all their land for, you know, their personal use. So, you know, that just was eliminated as an option. The other thing that goes on here is that, you know, these aren't huge moneymakers. We lease a very small portion. And finding a willing landlord that wants to put a cell tower on their property is a challenge. And in this case, we, and we've worked with other VFWs in other communities, and they tend to be willing landlords because they want to keep their VFW alive and sustainable. And, you know, it really doesn't have any impact on the VFW operation. So where, you know, it's a very small footprint. We don't, we're not taking up any of their parking or anything like that, that they have mandates to utilize. So, you know, we were lucky to strike a deal with the VFW. I think the VFW finds it attractive from a financial perspective. And it's kind of a win-win for them and for us.
Normal questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you. Well, thank you for the presentation and walking us through a lot of the questions that I had. The first one was on alternate sites. And I'll just say that it's really unfortunate that the Elks wasn't receptive because when I was looking at all the sites around there, that was an obvious alternative. In the 35 by 60-foot enclosure, the plans show space for future equipment?
Yes.
If that wasn't held, could that enclosure be smaller so you don't need the setback variance?
I understand the question. We are building this for Verizon. But I think to benefit the town and to, you know, the town doesn't want Verizon building single-use structures. And we've talked about this in the past, although I'm not sure you were on the board at that time. So we build what are called multi-carrier facilities. At some point, and we know because they kind of operate on the same infrastructure, AT&amp;T and T-Mobile and potentially other telecommunications companies will want to place their antennas on it. So we want to make sure we have sufficient room for them, both on the ground and on the tower itself. In addition, we just heard about public safety might be interested and they would need room to put their equipment at the bottom. So, you know, we, we design it to, you know, build it at the outset so that we're not coming back a year from now and asking for more space. So we want to be thoughtful in that regard.
Okay. The 10 feet off of the back of the existing building, I'm looking at, Gus, is that mandated? I mean, is there a minimum requirement there?
You're talking about the setbacks, correct?
They're holding the compound 10 feet off the back of the VFW.
The equipment would be in that purview, it'd be closer than, you actually applied for a 30-foot setback plan?
No, I think what she's talking about, there's a building.
Yeah.
And we're, and we're building 10 feet off the back of the building.
Exactly.
We've actually built up against the building, but we need to make sure as well that we don't have any impact on the foundation that's holding up the VFW hall. And our engineers have determined that there's no septic or anything in the back there. So it was designed to be, have no impact on the foundation. We don't want to be too close. And then, because inside the compound, it's not shown here, but where that circle is, that's like the base of the tower. And then underground will be a foundation to hold that up. And it's, it's hard to say, but that could be 10 or 12 feet in radius or whatever you call it for a square, depending on what's under there. And so we need to make sure we have sufficient room for that as well.
In the documents that were submitted, there's a tower report?
Yeah. What that is, is just...
Can you explain what that is? And then the heights in that didn't seem to match with the, what's being proposed for the tower.
What a tower is, it's like a federal database that we look at to confirm that we won't have any impact on air navigation. In this case, because there's really no airports nearby, we kind of know that, but this proves the town that there's no impact. And also more important, because it has no impact on air navigation, it doesn't need a blinky light on it. You know, I don't know if any around here, but like when you go up Needham and you have those 150 or, I mean, 1,500-foot towers, they all have blinky lights on them so planes don't come into them. And this doesn't require blinky light, which is an aesthetic issue, a safety issue. And also, you know, we get more, once the light goes on, we have to keep it on, so it's a maintenance issue. The reason why it doesn't line up, and I know exactly what you're talking about, is because they do it in meters and we do it in feet. So we're doing 100 feet and it converts it to meters.
Oh.
And I, it took me a long time to figure that out, too.
Okay.
So when, when...
It looked like it said 61 feet and it said it was a lattice structure, not a monopole. So I thought, oh, this is just like a form document they stuck in here.
No, I think it converts it to meters. I'll look at it, but, but the whole point of it is just to show that we don't have any impact on air navigation.
All right. You said there's no concern about wind. Do you have documentation? Was a wind study done in the area?
No. What, the engineering standards are county-specific and location-specific. So when they go to design the tower and the foundation, they take that all into account. I know only because my sister used to live in Franklin and my dad lives in Milford, this area actually gets more snow than everybody else in Massachusetts. And they take that into account and they have a lot of data to support that. So the engineers, when they go to design the foundation and the tower itself, take in the wind speeds that we've had in Massachusetts over the last 100 years in an area like Franklin.
Okay. Is there any review process for when that design gets submitted? Just, you know, if that's something that wind load and snow load gets considered during design, then how, then it'll review through your office? Gus?
Actually, it has to go through our office.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we design it and then we provide all the data certified by a professional engineer to the building inspector and they review it and bless it.
All right. So while this site isn't as wet as the others that were considered, there still is quite a bit of water there. So what kinds of resiliency measures are in place? There's the silt fence, but what else?
We, the, you see the site right here, that dotted line is the wetlands buffer. And that's not the wetlands, that's the buffer. I think your town requires a 100-foot buffer from the wetlands. So we're outside, all the activity will be outside of the wetlands buffer. And so, and then I think they've got silt fencing and other erosion control measures to make sure that, but we're already 100 feet from the wetlands. And that's the whole purpose of the buffer. But they have erosion control built into the design to make sure that we don't have any impact on the wetlands.
All right. In terms of electrical power, you mentioned it's coming off the VFW power, but the drawings show a new power line coming in from the street.
No, I thought, no, I thought, no, there was existing overhead lines. So we would, I think they go into the VFW and then we're tapping into that. And we might have to swap out the line for a little bit higher service, but there's no new electrical poles coming in.
Okay. It said there was a new pole coming off this street with, and then it would go underground.
Oh, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, I'm sorry.
And there's, is there any projected impact to the capacity in the area? Like, is this a huge power draw?
Say it again?
Is this a huge power draw?
Oh, no, no, we're talking like 300 amps. It's, it's, it's smaller than any kind of commercial activity and probably smaller than they already have at the VFW. than they already have at the VFW.
Megan asked about the generator, but is it a diesel and does it get regularly tested? Because that would be a noise thing.
Yeah, it, I think it cycles on like once a week, just to make sure that it runs. Generally, they prefer diesel, but if the town were to require propane, given the proximity to wetlands, we'd certainly agree to that.
Okay.
Yeah, huge amount.
All right, those are my questions.
Thank you.
Do you have a tolerance in your backyard?
If I could just, you, you had made, or, you know, I had questioned the 10-foot setback off of the building. And the 10-foot that you're showing here is to the fence, right? So, we're not talking about a, a large footing that needs to take place for that, because your, your actual tower is 17 foot, eight feet off of the fence. So, in essence, you're, you're 27 feet from the building. So, I guess the question was, why can't we get closer to the building?
Yeah.
And, and do away with that 30-foot setback?
Yeah, but don't we, I don't know how big the base of that concrete structure's going to be.
Nobody does.
Well, the engineers do when they build it.
Right.
But, but are you saying that 27 feet is not going to be enough? The center of the tower off the building? I mean, you know, how big is, is it going to be? 10 feet, 12 feet, 12?
We, we did a similar facility up in New Hampshire a couple of years ago. And what we found is a lot of times, sometimes older foundations, they don't go straight down, they flare out a little bit. And so, this was just to make sure we don't have any impact on the foundation to the, and I can ask the engineers if they can tighten it up, but, and so, my suspicion is that 10-foot is conservative to make sure that we don't have any impact on the, so when we're digging the foundation for the tower, we don't run into the foundation for the, the VFW home.
10 foot's a required setback from a building to an accessory structure.
Is that accessory structure include the fence or is it the...
Fences. So, you, Mr. Chairman, fences do not need permits and they do not have to meet the setbacks.
What, what about the equipment pad?
Equipment pads, we generally, with pool equipment, we're 10 feet away from the lot line minimum. And this would be a similar situation. He's applying for relief on setbacks. It's the board's...
Right.
...purview as to whether or not it's reasonable or not.
It's my understanding there's a 30-foot setback from the abutting property line to the west and our fence line is 20 feet. And then there'll be some equipment inside the fence and also, we'll clear it at the beginning with gravel, so I thought it's safe to ask for the variance now while I'm here in front of the zoning board. I could argue that the fence is not in, but at some point, there might be some equipment inside that, so I just want to get the variance now.
So, is it the equipment inside the fence that is infringing on that 30 feet or is it the tower itself?
The tower is more than 30 feet from the property line, but, you know, the, the fence line will pretty much parallel the rear property line. And there will be some activity within the 30 feet at some point in the future.
All right, that's your future.
A future pad.
Exactly.
Okay. The tower showed that you had, if you had three antennas around it, how many planning on putting up all three ready to get go? Are you waiting for the company?
No, we, we have a commitment from Verizon right now, so when it gets built, Verizon will be on there.
I would assume they'll be at the top because of...
Exactly. And, and then the other platforms will get mounted over time. We like to show what it would look like at full build-out, but we don't have any commitments from any other carriers at this time.
What's the distance between antennas on the tower?
They're about 10 feet on center line. The tower's 100 feet tall. The Verizon mounts at a center line of 95 feet and then the next platform will be at a center line of 85 feet and another center line of...
If you're using a center line of 95 feet...
What's that?
The tower's 100, do they stick up above the tower?
No. If you, if the tower's 100 and they attach at 95, the antennas go up to, like, they're about eight feet, so they go up three feet above and three feet below, so they don't exceed the height of the tower.
So, they're all within the 100 feet?
Exactly.
Having been involved with most of the towers that have been installed in Franklin over the last 30 years, this is, he makes a good presentation, he's been here before, he knows what he's got to say, he knows he's got the federal government behind him and the, that's just about, I remember years ago, we used to have the RF engineers come in and give us the RF stuff. We used to hire a guy out of New Hampshire that would come down and look at, over the data to make sure. The question always comes up, well, we got an antenna on here, a lot of people think they put a lot of power, gamma rays, whatever they think they put out. So, somebody asked a question one time, you know, about the antenna that was going up, I think, up off the Long Hill Road or something. So, they said, somebody asked, well, how many, how many antennas would we have to have here before we'd have to worry about, you know, kids growing up, you know, kids getting some kind of radiation out of that or whatever? And the answer was 28,000 of these antennas would have to be bundled up in one place before we'd have any kind of human impact. So, that's all that goes. I'll open it up to the floor. Just be mindful that I'm going to give you three minutes. You can ask a question, get the answer, and if you want to make a comment, it all has to be within three minutes. Go ahead, you first. Come up to the mic here and identify yourself, please.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Richard Growth. My wife, Mary Bridget, and I have lived at 12 Pine Street for 38 years and we are direct abutters. That property line that you're talking about is my property line, the back of my lot. And Emerson, my next-door neighbor from 6 Pine Street, our lots come together right there. So, we, we have problems with this, this plan. We understand the need for cell phone service, we understand the need for the VFW to exist, that there have been our neighbors the whole time we've been there. But the announcement about the fence, 30 feet, it's not the fence that bothers us, it's what's inside the fence. The pole itself, the tower, is 38 feet from my property line. So, that, we consider that quite a problem. So, you're looking at the bylaws, the overlay district and all that, that kind of thing. I understand that the, they can't build every tower in the, in the industrial parks or we, a lot of us, our neighbors, a lot of here, want to know why we can't use more up by the power lines, which I think is a part of the overlay district. But the overlay district is established by the Franklin to protect the citizens from the hazards associated with these towers, and there are hazards, in spite of some of the things we've heard, and also to minimize the visual impacts. So, it has common sense solutions in the bylaw, establish the overlay district, 90-foot height limits mentioned in there. The height of the tower is the closest it can be to the property line. So, in this application, I'm glad you pointed out the different heights that are in there. It says 110, 104, 100. There's a lot of different heights mentioned in the thing, so we're not exactly sure, but 38 feet is a lot shorter than the height of the tower, which is one of the limitations. No tower's closer than 250 feet to a residential building, there's public hearings. So, what we don't understand, five years ago, if you look at the form the VFW signed was in 2020, one of the people that signed it is now deceased. So, this is such a crushing need, five years later, we're, we're talking about something that the VFW agreed to in 2020. So, we got the 30-foot fence notification, but there's no mention in the notification to our neighbors, a lot of whom are here, that live in the area, about the tower has to be outside of the overlay district, the tower's being placed in a residential district, the 35-foot height requirement from the residential district, this tower's obviously 70 feet beyond that. Instead of 100 feet, it's 38 feet from our property lines, from Emerson to my, and I believe there's four houses from 26 Pine, 12 Pine, 6 Pine, and then the, the Maydees house on Pond Street are all within 250 feet. I understand you're building outside the bylaw and outside the overlay district, but if it made sense to build it inside the overlay district, why aren't some of these same restrictions put on the things that are being put into residential areas? If it was safe to put in the overlay district, it should be much safer to put right behind my house. 100-feet tower is to my kids', my grandchildren's playhouse. 250 feet is the bedroom where my grandchildren are sleeping tonight, so it, it means a lot to us. I'm pleased you can't see it from Pond Street, you can see it from our house, you can see it from our neighbors' houses, so.
Thank you. I've got more.
That's your time. That's your time.
I, I just, I put together our analysis of it, my wife and I.
We each get three minutes.
I'll give them mine.
Respectfully, could we please let Richard speak on behalf of some of us who would like to get our three minutes?
Just stand up and be identified and we'll take your time and give it to you.
That would be great.
Anyone here who would like to give Dick their time?
Yes, Dick.
Yeah, stand up.
Yes, Dick, let's go.
What's your name?
Thank you very much.
Millie, Emmy, Emmy, what?
Go ahead.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and, and inside the packet, but I did the first part based on this analysis of the, of the Vertex Plan. My wife did a thing about property values and things, and in between is a petition signed by many of our neighbors. I went around, talked to a lot of the people that are here tonight on Pine Street, Betancourt, Mary Ann Drives not far away, Tony Lane. So, our whole area, it's a residential area, as you mentioned before, it's heavily residential in our end. So, again, it's not just that you can't see it from Pond Street, it's behind the building right in our backyards. So, some of the other questions we have, you know, basically Vertex can declare that all these other areas are looking at the other places. The, the request was signed by, by the VFW five years ago. When were these other sites studied? I don't know. We're also advocating, a lot of the neighbors want to see like a peer review thing, you were mentioning before, used to hire experts. I'm not an expert on any of this, I don't know, I don't know what's going to go on the tower, but we would like somebody besides the Vertex coming in saying, here's a, here's a need, here's the only solution in town that's going to work, and, and I think the town of Franklin should invest. Or, and I've read about some, many places where a Vertex will actually pay the town or pay to have an independent peer-reviewed study.
Yep.
And we think something like that should be done here, too. So, one of the other things that's come up is how long ago were these other sites studied? I understand there's marshland and wetlands and things like that, very much so, but, you know, there's other things that have happened. Maple Gate, the golf course, is at the end of our street. Basically, it's going to be turned into a solar farm. A 100-foot tower, 150-foot tower wouldn't bother a solar farm, so, I mean, there might be other sites that have opened up since then that would be practical sites that would address the problem in this specific area. Brandon Gill of Vertex in, in the thing says, his statement in, in the application said, of all the other sites you looked at, none is superior to the VFW. Are some of them pretty good? Not superior doesn't mean it's the only site in town, according to what we read. There's no specifics in there as far as that goes. And then the other thing, I just want to talk about, and again, I'm not a cell phone expert or a coverage expert, but does, does a tower really solve this problem that you're trying to fill in? If you look at the, he showed the map with the hole, but if you look at the solution that's in the, in the application, almost, I'd say half of this new service that's going to be provided by this is across Pond Street, which is wetlands, like you said, there's nothing there. So, unless the deer are using cell phones, I, I don't really understand what you're really adding. It's, you know, adding somewhat in our direction. I'm a Verizon person, I work at home, I can't use my phone in my basement. Yes, it needs to be fixed, but there's got to be a different way to do it than putting a 100-foot pole 38 feet from my backyard. So, that's our point. Our neighbors, our neighbors are here because they're in the same area and they'll be looking at it, too, and it's going to affect our property values.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Don Newton, I'm the homeowner at 954 Pond Street.
This Montserratity would be directly across from me. I'm wondering if there was a balloon test done? And if not, could they have a balloon test done so that we could actually see what 100 feet of tower is going to look like from...
Well, I work from home, so I would have seen a balloon test if it had happened.
No, I'm going to tell you, it's not required, so, and we never really...
We'd like a balloon test, sir.
So, we didn't do it.
So, and the other thing is the natural resource impact assessment. Has the town thought about a natural resource impact assessment? There's lots of wildlife there, there's bats, there's bees, there's all kinds of stuff. You know, this proposed site, 50-plus percent of this is wetlands. So, maybe the birds will get to play Angry Birds on their cell phone, but it's really not going to help anybody else out too much, is it? So, what about putting repeaters? They could put repeaters over on the power lines that would cover the, the west part of this, the part where there is residential area, and it wouldn't be a 100-foot Montserratity. So, that's a couple of things. I know that in Norfolk, they put cellular repeaters on high-tension lines and they seem to work fine and they enhanced the cellular coverage there. As someone that lives on Pond Street, at Pond Street, and to reference the incident you referred to, sir, I was outside for an hour and a half. My vehicle was involved in that accident. I was the residential side.
I believe it was I who rolled down the street and hit my car.
Correct, and hit my car. I had no problem with my cell phone service. Your guys didn't respond because they were too busy extracting the car, the two people in the car that had flipped over. So, I respectfully disagree with your assessment on how come you couldn't reach the folks involved? They were all busy. But they were on their cell phones, they were using their radios, so I disagree with that assessment, sir. The other thing I'd like to know, maybe this gentleman could answer, perhaps you could speak to the multiple lawsuits that Vertex has got currently? Maybe the lawsuit down on the Cape where they're trying to block the same proposed tower in Sandwich and Falmouth? So, perhaps you could speak to the multiple lawsuits where they're alleging deception in safety and environmental-related practice? Or we can get to that later.
If you want, if you don't want, that's okay, too, it's got nothing to do with this proposal.
I have three sites that have been approved by the Cape Cod Commission, which is a regional planning authority, and the respective towns of Franklin and Bourne. We have one case where an abutter is appealing that and we're vigorously defending it and we're quite confident that the court is going to throw out...
So, the class action lawsuit, the bankruptcy suit, environmental bankruptcy suit, care to speak to that?
It's not a class action, it's an abutter appeal to a zoning approval.
So, maybe I call Palmer and Sala tomorrow, Rosen Law, and ask them, they'll get better answers or more probably appropriate answers, perhaps. Well, I, for one, think they should put, they could put repeaters on those high-tension power lines that, and would cover the same exact area. I respectfully ask that this board deny this request. There's enough nonsense in this town as it is. Thank you for your time.
Can I address that, Mr. Chair?
Go on.
In years past, we as an industry, and I used to do a lot of work for Verizon directly, would put them on high-tension power lines. And the lines that come from Franklin come all the way across from Plymouth and, and go through Canton and Stoughton and some of the other communities there. And we're actually in the process of taking those off of the power lines because what's happened as the technology matures and we have to swap out an old antenna for a new antenna, we call the power company and they, we say, we got to climb it, and they say you can't climb it until we shut down the power line. And they say, well, shut down the power line, how's October of 2026? And we said, we thought we were going to do this tomorrow. And so, all the different telecommunications companies are in the process of taking them off of power lines and putting them on poles. We just built a tower in Canton right up against the power lines in a, in a similar residential neighborhood because of the fact that the antennas on the power lines could not be serviced anymore.
So, why not put an antenna near the power lines and then you won't have that issue? A little common sense here.
No, we, we, we found private property next door to the power line that was in this case, there was no, there was no private property available.
Anyone else have a question? Sure, come up to the mic.
Thank you, my name is Christine Tubau, I'm at 63 Pine Street. My husband and I bought our house in 1977. We've been there since then. I'm concerned about, most of all, I think you have answered my questions, but I'm more concerned about the, the elephant in the room being about health problems. And I am concerned that the possible stigma attached by younger people who are now very concerned about this, who might be buying my house later, will attach a problem, that there's going to be a problem with their, living there, a problem with them being pregnant maybe and having a baby there. They don't want to live there if they can see before they even buy my house that there's going to be a problem. So, I want you to think about it. I know that there's a federal law that covers and there's no, you know, findings now about health problems, but there's certainly... health problems, but there certainly is enough information that even the maintenance of those power lines has to be curtailed and limited by the men working on them. This type of thing shows you the effect of the woodlands around them, and the effect of the trees in the area. There are things happening, I don't want to be a crazy person here, I'm just saying that this is what people believe, it is what people have in their minds when they are buying a house, and I think it will affect the housing of, the cost of my home.
Absolutely.
And my neighborhood. So I want everyone to sort of think about that.
No, just take one over here.
My name's Madison Newton, I'm a resident of 954 Pond Street as well. My question is mainly regarding, like, you know, wildlife, all of that stuff, so, you know, you had mentioned something about, you know, you're coming up with that, but I know for a fact that, you know, it is conservation land, there is frequent migration birds, there's bats, there's a ton of stuff, I just want to know if there is a proposed something to put up to protect, you know, the wildlife and all of that, that does help the ecosystem? Like, is there something in place to protect that?
What do you think, bad houses?
Yeah. Like I said, because we're federally regulated, we're also federally regulated, and unlike any other development in the town of Franklin, we have to do extensive environmental due diligence to make sure we don't have an impact. There's nothing stopping the VFW from building a bigger structure without, by going through the normal channels. But because we're building a structure, we need to make sure we have no impact, and so we do that. And one of the gentlemen mentioned the, we call it the NEPA report, the National Environmental Policy Act, and it's a very extensive due diligence report that we do to make sure. And our engineers do preliminary work to make sure we're not going to run into problems, but we need to make sure that there's no impact on fish and wildlife. In some areas of Massachusetts, we cannot do construction between November and April because of bats. But you know what, anyone else could build something anytime they wanted, because they're not subject to those federal regulations.
We're not talking about anybody else here, are we?
But, but like I said, so we're very environmentally conscious to make sure that we don't have any impact because of the federal regulations that we're under. We're quite confident, based on all the other facilities that we've built in Franklin and in all of eastern Massachusetts, that we're not going to have an environmental impact. But as part of the process, we confirm that with the federal government, with the Department of Natural Resources, with Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Department of Environmental Services, Department of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we have to notify literally dozens of Indian tribes to make sure that we're not having an impact on Native American resources. I don't believe anybody in, who built a residential house in Franklin, or who built the VFW hall, did any impact on environment, on Native Americans, but we're required to.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that, yeah.
Specifically.
So, so the point is, is that these facilities are very heavily federally regulated, to make sure that we have no environmental impact.
Are there like peer-reviewed studies, or anything that, you know, you could give to us that would prove what you're saying?
It would be appropriate, if the board were so inclined, to require us to provide a copy of our NEPA report to the building commissioner, along with the building permit application. It's not done yet, because we can't finish it until we finish this process.
Okay.
No, we, we, no, we certainly generate it, we certainly glad we're compliant with all federal laws.
Absolutely nothing.
Anyone else? Hang on, Mr. Chair in the last line, she's coming up. Just hang in there, see what you can get.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm Mary Bridget Growth, I'm the big, tall, handsome guy's wife on 12 Pine Street. And, yeah, I wrote something out, because I'm not really comfortable public speaking, so I hope you don't mind if I read off my paper. The true meaning of the phrase property value is rarely explored. For most of us, the equity in our homes, their property value isn't just a number. We're not wealthy. Our homes are our largest and most important source of financial security. They represent our life savings, as well as our financial legacy to our children. They form the financial foundation for future opportunities, funding our retirement, supporting our family's needs, weathering life's uncertainties, like unemployment and illness. Constructing an 104-foot tower on Pond Street in the middle of our neighborhood will seriously damage the value of our homes, creating a substantial detriment to the public good. The reason for devaluation are many. Cell towers are gargantuan eyesores, their visual pollution disrupts a neighborhood's aesthetic appeal, significantly lowering home values. As we all know, the impact of HTV on home buyers has only heightened the effect of visual polluters like cell towers on our home sales. Whether true or not, there is a wide, excuse me, whether true or not, there is a wide perception that cell towers are dangerous, especially to our children. The majority of homes buying around the VFW hall are entry-level homes, sought after by young families. What young family is going to want their kids playing thirty-eight feet from a cell tower? The stigma associated with living near a cell tower dramatically shrinks the pool of potential buyers. An independent real estate study found that ninety-four percent of home buyers would be less interested in a home near a cell tower. Given two homes and yards of equal size and quality, would you buy a home with a gigantic cell tower close beside? And in the rare instance that you would consider that home, would you pay the same price for a similar home nowhere near a cell tower? Of course not. According to the National Association of Realtors, the widespread tower stigma can lead to lower demand, fewer house showings, and ultimately, much lower sale prices. Even if a buyer does not personally believe in the adverse health effects, they know that other potential buyers might. They will demand a discount to offset the risk of reselling the property later. Additionally, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development classifies cell towers as hazards and nuisances. This classification requires appraisers to adjust property value, further formalizing the negative impact on marketability. The Zillow effect magnifies the damage done to property values, doubling and sometimes tripling the number of homes affected by cell tower looming over the neighborhood. Telecommunications inside advisors, inside advisors state that nearby homes will experience an eight-percent devaluation. For example, a $500,000 home drops to $460,000. Objective real estate consultants estimate that the loss to homeowners will be far greater. No one wants their home to drop tens of thousands of dollars. Vertex profits, as well as the VFW's leasing profit, come at the expense of our home's devaluation. They are not only severely damaging our home's value, they are also robbing us and our families of any sense of a secure future. Please do not allow this variance, please place these cellphone towers responsibly away from homes and away from schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, you know what, thank you for your volunteer service. We know that you are volunteers, giving of your time, and we all appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know how I'm going to follow that up, because that was very welcome. I would just, my name is Cindy Millie, I live at 41 Pine Street, these are my neighbors. You can hear a lot of shakiness in all of our voices right now, because really, quite frankly, you know, we're feeling that, you know, maybe you guys, this is, is this a done deal? Because this one location that you were talking about, it is wet back there, it's wet all around that area. We talked about wind. I can tell you personally, if you've, if you've come down 41 Pine Street, you've seen nothing but cranes and tree companies in our backyard. We have had about $120,000 worth of damage from the wind, we've had professional tree companies out, you guys have seen it, all, anyone that's been in our neighborhood. We had two major pine trees come down, a 7,000-pound branch. It is a wind tunnel right where our property line goes, right to where their property line goes.
All the time.
Right? If you've seen our property in the last five years, we had insurance companies who don't even want to insure us anymore, to the point, we had to take money out of our retirement to take down ten or twelve trees that are in bad shape. Has anyone had a tree company come look? We live on Pine Street, right? How, how fast is a pine, does anyone here know? We've been there 20 years. In the 20 years we've been there, we've lost all kinds of sun in our backyard. Those pine trees grow, they grow fast, and they're wet, those roots are bad, and there's a lot of trees that come down there. How much does a pine tree grow in 10 years? Maybe you can tell us that. Do you know? 10 to 30 feet, right? So you're going to put up a 100-foot tower in, on a, on a street called Pine Street, with nothing but pine trees? What's that going to do in 10 years? Right? If, if something doesn't knock your tower out, like these 100, 100-foot pine trees that are coming down left and right?
Guarantee the tower ain't going to grow.
Okay, well, you know what, maybe we should.
We never know.
Right? I can tell you right now, our pool's been knocked out, our house almost got taken out. In, honestly, in a grid that over the course of the last 10 to 15 years, if you live in this grid, you know the six houses, eight houses on Pine Street, the first couple on Pond Street? Has anyone talked to National Grid about how many power outages we have in a year? We get a small wind, we don't even have a wind, and the power goes out on a regular basis. How many of you have generators here?
It was in the neighborhood.
All right, all right. Have you ever heard the generator?
It's got nothing to do with the tower.
This, you know what this has to do with? The power going out on a regular basis. Right?
Well, that's not his department, it's not our department.
No, but you know what?
Trying to kick a generator on all the time.
Let me ask you this, do any of you have a cell tower in your backyard? Any of you? That are voting on this tonight, does anyone have that?
And would you be against it?
And I'm not trying to be combative, but I will say this.
Wish you did, then put it in your backyard.
Just to be, to be respectful, these people live, not, from me to you, that's where, that's where it's going to go. Do you know how much the generator noise makes in our neighborhoods, Marianne Drive, Pond Street? It happens all the time. Talk to National Grid, I would implore you to please do your research. We lose power 10, 12, 15 times a year, and not for, we are always the last, that little bubble right there in that area that you want to put this monstrosity, that is where we live. We are constantly hearing that hum, that buzz, six days, one day, we lost our power for six days, six days. That's their backyard. I'm going to look out mine, and you know what, our property values are going to plummet. You wouldn't want that in your backyard, we don't, and I don't, this, I'm sorry, you know what, I'm sorry.
You're telling your time, that's all.
Okay, I understand. But you know what, this, this, this can't be a done deal, I would ask that we get more information about the other 11 sites that you purportedly did your research on, and again, if none are superior to us, great, that's fine, we might be the best choice, but we are not the best choice. There's got to be another alternative here, this is a residential neighborhood, just because the VFW wants to take a payoff, right? I'd like to know how much they're getting paid?
Exactly.
Because I can tell you, it's not going to be enough to raise our property values, enough to make that worthwhile for any of us. It is a residential neighborhood, and I would respectfully ask you to consider if this were your neighborhood, the Franklin Police Department routinely sit in the parking lot of the VFW, always. I drive by it all the time at a very respectful, low, low-rabbed speed, they are there, and they are across the street at the Elks. If it was so bad and they couldn't speak on their cellphones, they would not be in those lots. I have Verizon, sometimes the coverage is spotty, but there has to be a better alternative. I would beg you to please take this into consideration, we're all at that age where we're getting ready to flip our houses over to younger people, and I can tell you, 20 years ago, 25 years ago, when we bought our house, we drove by the places that had those towers. Because whether you believe it or you don't, whether you think you can provide details or not, there is a stigma attached with that, and there's got to be some truth to it. So I would ask you to please reconsider this, and keep this in this night, guys. And I would ask one more thing, give the slide a couple back, where you actually referenced the town of Bourne and not the town of Franklin, so if you're going to make your research valid, please at least make sure your slides are correct.
Okay, I'll take one more, then we got to move on.
Can you hear me now? I can't hear Verizon from my house. Okay, my name is Jackie Macyle, I do not live on Pond Street or Pine Street, I live on Elm Street, which is parallel. We have had crappy service at our place for, ever since we owned a cellphone, and we've been there 45 years. It was so bad during Hurricane Irene in 2011, we lost power for five, six days, and in order to even connect to the internet, so that you can find out what the hell's going on with the electricity, we had to drive all the way to Central Street in downtown Franklin and sit in the Liquor World parking lot. So, when I heard we were going to get a new cell tower, I was like, whoa, this is great. Then I looked where it is, you're putting it down in a hollow, and then, you know, so it's not even going to get over the hill of Partridge to get to my house. Why did, I thought the town figured out where it's going to be, now it's Verizon who figures out where it's going to be. Why don't, why is this not on a hill? Why is it not on a hill? Why is it not?
You have one on a hill not far from you.
But we don't get the, we can't, we can't get service when there's no power in the house. We don't get water, we don't get, we don't get self, we can't connect to the.
There's a tower up by the mulch place, there's a tower inside of one of those, yeah, Fairmont Farms, there's a cell tower up there.
We can't get any service.
I don't know why.
My, my husband.
What do they have, Verizon?
Yeah, Verizon.
Call Verizon, tell them you don't get any service, they'll give you a unit you can put in your house, they'll pick up the service.
Really? Because we researched all types of.
They advertise 5G all over the world, all over the country.
Yeah, I know what they advertise.
You call them up, you tell them you can't get service in your house, they'll, they'll take your address.
We can't go out on the porch and get the cellphone to connect to the internet. We also have the town property up on Maple Street, well, how many millions of dollars, oh, Thomas, how many, how many millions of dollars do we pay for all that land up on Maple Street? The big parcel we bought, everybody was excited on the town council three years ago.
Two or three million.
Yeah, so why not, why can't we put it up there? There's no homes up there, yeah, but Verizon has to build a road in there, but that road could be multipurpose, it could be a road that has offshoots for hiking trails, or cross-country skiing, or go out there and birdwatch, but don't go too close to the tower. But there's other solutions, and I don't think Verizon is, you know, they didn't do a very good search, and there's 10 towers in this town, and I can't get service when the power goes out? Give me a break.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have one person online, you got the hand up, I can't see the hands. Oh, Jane? Jane, you want to say something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I won't take the full three minutes, but I am, oh, I'm at 607 Maple Street, I am not a director of butter because I'm not on Pond Street, but I'm probably about not even a minute away. I don't think a cell tower should be going in a residential area. These people have bought their homes with expectations, and one of them was not having a cellphone tower in their backyard. I have an eight-year-old granddaughter, and if somebody wanted to put one that close to my backyard, I would not be happy, because children wander. It's not safe, it's dangerous. Being in wetlands, I've also seen trees come down by their roots in around Pine Street, up on Beet Street, we had had a tree uproot land on someone's house. This is not an area for it. The property values will be damaged, but their property taxes won't get lowered. And now, the other gentleman spoke about the lawsuit, the sheer fact that for 30 seconds, that room went to crickets, and nobody said anything, says everything that we need to know. Those lawsuits should be looked into and checked into before this is passed, because once you pass this and it is done, you can't undo it. Listen to the residents and look into it further before you okay this project, because you can't undo something once you've done it. That's it.
Thanks.
Have a great night.
All right, I'm not going to continue this until. Continue this until November twenty, twenty? Is it twentieth or twenty-four?
The next one's November sixth.
No, after that.
November twentieth.
November twentieth. November twentieth.
What would be the reason for continuing?
Well, if you wanna make a motion, we'll take a motion.
Yeah, I mean, so, why don't we let the federal government play this out? I'd like to make a motion to deny the variance request for 103 Pond Street for Veritek Towers LLC.
Motion made.
I, um, will second the motion because, well, I agree that we need cell service in that area. I think there should be more looking into alternate sites. Not, not within that proximity to a residential house.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No. Motion does, motion passes anyway, because it takes, uh...
Motion passes?
If I vote no. They, they're, all, all they need is, you need three votes in the affirmative to get it approved. Correct?
But there was a motion to deny, and there was only two votes made.
That means that you can't get three to approve. Do the math, dumbass.
Yeah, I know. You know, we're getting back down like we're in the first grade, right?
But you, you made a motion to deny, and there were two votes in favor, so the motion does not carry.
Right.
So now we have...
Well, no, the motion carries because you didn't get three votes in the affirmative.
But there was no motion to...
See, that's what I don't like when they make a motion to deny. I'd rather make a motion to approve.
Correct. So, uh, if...
All right, make another motion, don't you?
Um, if I might comment, though?
Sure.
Um, you know, this happens in a lot of places. There's gotta be somewhere else you can go. But no one has said where.
No, that's not true. I told you where to put it.
And...
I'm sure they'll tell you where to go once they get out the hallway.
Yeah, exactly. But, you know, but that's my point.
But it's not our job to tell you where to put your tower.
Right.
You're coming here, you're putting power in, but you're putting it in the middle of a wetlands area that in an area next to neighbors, you're talking, there's a butter here.
We don't want you there.
We denied your request to do so. I think that, I think that the meeting is closed, huh? What do we have?
He's the boy, I'll put it down.
Denied.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yeah.
Was there a motion made to close the public hearing?
Probably not. Motion, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, because we were gonna continue up until now, they want to close the vote. All right, I'll need a motion to close the public hearing if we're gonna vote.
Could I comment on that, sir?
Sure.
Is there any more information that the board might want in order to make a positive decision? Uh, cause you keep saying there's gotta be somewhere else. So if I can provide data to show that there's nowhere else, which to supplement what we've already provided...
Listen, Frank, I understand. And I understand where you're gonna go with it after this, too, so it might be the easiest
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. Discussion hearing, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
All those opposed, none. If you're gonna make a motion, make a motion to approve it. Hope no. Because it takes three votes in the affirmative to get something passed. So if you made a motion to deny, he's saying that the motion is passed.
So I get to amend my motion?
Well, we're on a new motion because we closed the public hearing now. Before that, we just made a weak one.
Are you okay now, Matt? Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion to approve the variance for 103, uh, 1034 Pond Street for Veritek Towers LLC.
Second the motion.
Okay. Discussion. Just so you know, we're making a motion to approve. So what would your, what would your vote be?
My vote is? No.
Okay. It's, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes. All those opposed?
No.
No.
We gotta clear that time.
Understand. Thank you very much.
We've got business to continue, man. Yeah, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think they just need to offer the Elks more money.
Anyway. Attorney Cannon, you wanna, you wanna come on back on again? How can we not have, where do you go?
Here.
There we go.
Good evening. Yeah, good evening to the chair, members of the board. Thank you. Respectfully, I'd just like to request a brief continuance to November sixth. If there's room on that, on that night. It's been very frustrating for the applicant, waiting for the buyer to get the drainage design done. Although I did hear from G and H today that they expect to have a design done by October 31st, which we could then get it to the board and have time to review for November sixth. I did make it clear to the buyer and to the applicant, it's just not right to continue to continue. And that if we don't have the plan in time for November sixth, that at that point, we'd be asking to withdraw the petition. So it's the end of the road, November sixth, one way or the other.
How's November 20th sound?
That's fine if that's, that's for the board.
Would you say Ted? I'm sorry.
That, that's fine with the, with the applicant, if that's best for the board.
All right. I'll entertain a motion and continue this until November 20th.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
All right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. Thanks, Ted.
Thank you all. Have a good night. Appreciate it.
AJ, you're up.
Time being approximately 7:40 PM. 4:44 East Central Street, Tag Central LLC. Applicant is seeking a building permit to construct a 264-unit multifamily development. The building permit is denied without a comprehensive permit from the ZBA.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. AJ Alavisos with the applicant, Tag Central LLC, joined here by Peter Freeman, our attorney, Carlton Quinn of Allen &amp; Major Associates, our civil engineer, and Peter Alavisos on Zoom from Tag Central LLC as well. And we have our architect and landscape architect on Zoom as well, in case there's any questions for them. Based on the previous hearing and the balloon study that we conducted, we heard some feedback from the board as well as neighbors to see if there's anything further we could do to improve the plan. So we went ahead and studied it. We came up with a solution to significantly increase the amount of buffer area on the east side to the benefit of the residential butters over there. We adjusted the parking lot on the east side by reducing the, the dimensions of some, some parking spaces, of all the parking spaces on the east side, which, which does necessitate a waiver from the board. The spaces are eight and a half feet rather than nine. Still plenty of room to, to fit any size vehicle. And we also reduced some of the parking spaces. It does still stay above the 1-5 recommended ratio. So the total parking ratio is now 1-5-2. The revision resulted in a increase of the buffer by approximately one-third compared to the previous alternate plan we submitted at, at the previous hearing. Uh, we, um, that, that allowed us to save a significant amount of existing mature trees in that area. There were a number of them that were kinda just on the cusp of our limit of work line. So by bringing that limit of work line further in, it resulted in, in a lot more existing trees that we could save, which, which we were pleased to see. So now the total buffer area is over half of an acre between our residential butters and, and our limit of work line. So we were pleased with that minor modification from the, the previous alternate plan. With that alt, with that change, we also had a number of concessions and improvements that, that we incorporated as compared to the previous, previously supported lit plan that the town council, conservation commission, and the planning board voted to support when we went through the preliminary lit process. Though, some of those concessions and improvement include, we changed the roof design to flat, which lowered the building roof height approximately 10 feet to respect our butters. We also made some, some significant buffer area improvements, the ones I just mentioned that I presented tonight, as well as planting a significant number of new vegetation to fill in any gaps that exist between the buffer and our project. We also incorporated a retaining wall at our expense to save more buffer, save the most buffer as possible on the east side. We also lowered our unit count by 10 units, and we were able to remove a building. That building was in the area near the residential butters to the east. We also increased the setback by nearly 20 feet of the closest building to the eastern property line. So with all those improvements and concessions that we made since the original lit plan, we're really pleased that we have a plan in front of you that is not only consistent with the plan that was supported by the town from, from the beginning, but it also features additional improvements and concessions that, that make this plan even better than, than the one that was originally supported. So with that, we are happy to answer any questions. We understand peer review is, is in a, in a good place. I think I saw a letter come in indicating no further comments. I know we had a, a previous letter from the traffic engineers indicating no further comments. So at this point, I, we believe the application's been thoroughly vetted. We're happy to answer any further questions that you guys may have. Thank you.
Joe. You all set?
I do have a letter from Mr. Chairman.
You just said you were all set. I'm just gonna wait what he says. Well, I didn't, I didn't get that impression. Want to just go over and tell us what are some of the highlights?
We have one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Joe Pagnola from Hancock Associates, your peer-reviewed civil engineer. We have not been active on this project for, for quite a while. Our previous letter was back in early August. There was a response to that letter in, in the middle of August. And that original response had indicated that revised engineering plans were forthcoming. I understand the applicant has been working diligently with the conservation commission and their consult, their civil engineering consultant, Beta, on floodplain and stormwater issues. And I've been tracking those issues as that process has gone along. And we're in agreement that, yes, the stormwater and flood issues seem to be coming to a, a close. But we were, we were informed today that, that revised plans, revised full engineering plans were not forthcoming. And that we then moved into looking at the project from the standpoint of possibly conditioning any outstanding issues. So with that kind of overview, I'll, I'll go through my, the highlights of, of my, my So the, the applicant has revised the, the southeast corner, and they did do that balloon test, and that was in reaction to concerns from the, from the direct neighbors and the impacts there. Uh, and, and that was informed by the balloon test. And I guess Hancock defers to the, the board as to whether or not that's sufficient to address those comments, I mean, those, those, those concerns. So they've, I guess they've proposed mitigation in the way of the building height reduction, the building movement, and the increase in the, um, increase in the, the buffer with what they're saying is additional plantings. But I have, again, we, we don't have a full set of revised plans with revised landscape plans. It's commitments. So that, if there were no plans between now and the board finishing this process, it would have to be heavily conditioned. Knowing that comprehensive permits are, are heavily conditioned all the time, and a major condition that happens in comprehensive permits is the issuance of final plans prior to construction. And that is, there's an, usually an allowance within that for additional peer review, so that the board can reengage us, or any one of your choice, to review those more detailed complete plans. With regards to the parking, the parking is, um, is slightly reduced to 1.52. That's still within the 1.35 that your, your traffic peer, peer review engineer had, had said was the, kind of the low threshold of adequacy. The, the distribution of those parking spaces, it's a, it's a little shy on that east side from the standpoint. I really would have to pull out and use some of the parking around the clubhouse and down the entry aisle to, to really get to that 1.52 for the eastern, eastern building. So with that said, we remain concerned about snow storage. Because snow, we're, we're pulling in the development, the conservation commission is trying to pull them away from the, um, the buffers and, and the wetlands. It's highly likely that the conservation commission is going to have some restrictions on placement of snow proximate to the wetlands. So there, there hasn't been a revised snow storage plan with this. So if we were to move into a condition, it would have to be a condition requiring the submission of a, a snow storage... the submission of a snow storage plan prior to construction with peer review for that sufficiency and a kind of an all-inclusive. If they don't have enough snow storage, they can't impact parking, and they have to truck it offsite. So having dealt with multifamily managers, they don't like that. They don't like to have to truck snow offsite. So but if it's conditioned, then it's conditioned. And again, the concern there is just the adequacy of the melding of the adequacy of parking and the adequacy of snow storage.
Can't push it in the river then, huh?
Can't push it in the river. So we had called for a little bit more information on temporary sediment. I think that's probably going to be sufficiently conditioned by the conservation commission, but we can offer some additional, some conditioning that would be maybe redundant, but get it in there. We had called for some idea of the cut fill and how much material was being brought in or taken out of this site. I think it's generally going to be a fill site because they're building retaining walls and building up a lot of the site. Normally, you know, we call for some kind of cut fill analysis even preliminarily just to get an idea of the amount of trucks that are going to be coming in here and the impact to the neighborhood during construction. Again, that can be conditioned, that they provide that, that they provide the number of trucks, that they provide the rough schedule of when that's going to happen, and the truck routes. And then if the board, the board could even go further to restrict truck traffic in areas that you think it shouldn't be. So again, we called for it. They said that it's going to be done later. It's going to be done when they engage a contractor and figure all that out. I think we can come up with conditions to address that item. With regards to the sewer, I think that the DPW is comfortable with pushing the sewer study off. And essentially, what's going to happen is they're going to do the sewer, they're going to study the pump station across the street, understand whether it can take the flow. If it can't, they're probably going to do the onsite, the onsite tank, and then pump off peak to not have the impact to the pump station. I guess the DPW is in agreement with that, that they feel that the problems at that pump station are during peak times. So if you can pump off peak, then that's fine. They did, there was a question with regards to storage of sewage in the water protection district. They did provide a letter with reference to the state regulations, and I was in agreement with that, that there are no, there appears to be no state prohibition on having that kind of a tank onsite within the water protection district. Obviously, it needs to be tight, watertight, and it needs to be tested and ensured that it is that. But that goes for any sewage tank, any septic tank. You don't want those leaking into the ground around. We were looking for more details on the sewer infrastructure. They'd like to push that off, and that's fine. Again, it's very common for final construction plans to be conditioned and peer reviewed at a later date. I think they're fine with the fire department with regards to access. Again, with regard to landscaping, that can be conditioned, that a full landscape plan be submitted. With regards to stormwater, again, we defer to Beta Group. There was recent email traffic, 10-22-25, from Mr. Quinn from Allen and Major and Mr. Crowley from Beta, and it seems that they're down to three issues on that. But again, that's up.
That means tomorrow?
That's up, no. That's up, they're very minor issues, and it sounds like that can be done. And again, the traffic has been wrapped up, and none of these configuration changes have any impact on the conclusions of the traffic study because there's a 10-unit reduction in the new plan.
You never talked about waivers. You give a waiver list out?
We do.
Okay. Why don't we just go over them and see which ones you really need and which ones you don't need? You have that, Joe?
Yep.
Tell us what you're looking for, why you need it, and the explanation.
We can run through them quickly, and if you have a question.
Well, multi-use is not allowed in the commercial too. You can skip that one.
Yes, some of these are pretty straightforward. And the number of buildings on a lot, we're also providing four multifamily buildings, a clubhouse, and six garages.
Yeah, but I think you can have that in commercial too, if you need it. It wouldn't be residential, but it'd be buildings. All it says is buildings. It doesn't say the number of buildings on a lot.
Okay.
I don't know. I'm sure, you know, most commercial lots have more than one building on them, so, but whatever.
Maximum height of a building over three stories and over 40 feet. We have three buildings that are four stories and 50 feet. No building area or leaching field should be located within 35 horizontal feet of the normal bank of any stream. We do have parking lots within 22 feet and buildings within 20 feet of the stream. These are in areas that have been previously degraded.
Do you need that one too, huh?
We also requesting the ZBA approve our signage as opposed to coming back and getting an approval for a sign. The parking schedule requires two stalls per bedroom, I'm sorry.
Unit.
Two stalls per unit. We're requesting a reduction to 1.52 stalls per unit. Parking space dimensions, the town standard is nine feet by 19 feet. We're proposing stalls that range from nine by 18 to eight and a half by 18. Nine by 18 is a pretty standard one, and for residential development, eight and a half is usually acceptable. And this was done to help increase the vegetated buffer for the butters and the reduced parking size. Site plan review, obviously, the commission will be approving the site plan rather than the planning board. Impervious coverage required. Rendering impervious coverage up to 80% of the upland area of a lot within a water resource district is only permitted in non-residential zones provided the application for site plan approval has been provided. This is a request to have the zoning board be the approval and not the site plan approval.
So you're looking for a waiver on it other than us doing it as opposed to?
Yeah, it's really kind of redundant with the previous one. It's just that, given the fact that it's a comprehensive permit, the zoning board is granting a permit.
As opposed to the?
As opposed to the planning board.
So it's just a procedural issue. It's not really a waiver?
Correct. But there's many like that where they're redundant.
Well, that's what we hear all the time, you know, you're giving so many waivers. Why can't they go without any? But some of them aren't really waivers. They're just coming to us because it's a comprehensive permit.
Okay. This one, it's a long one, but it basically requires the building inspector to approve the drainage of the site. This is just one to allow the ZBA to approve the drainage as we proposed it.
Long as Joe says it's all right, you're okay.
This provides a surety for?
This is for the portion of the, isn't this, is this?
This is the stormwater management bylaw, sorry. So that's for the zoning we've just finished. This one is for the stormwater management. It requires a discretionary surety be posted at the direction of the Franklin DPW. We'd request that if any sureties are required, it would be done by this board as a condition. Groundwater levels measured November to April in areas to be used for stormwater retention. We had some just outside of that, and we've discussed these concerns with Beta, and they were okay with us using it because the time of year we had at the early, late part of the spring was a lot of rain, and the groundwater levels across the state were up, so they agreed that we could use them. I think they were from May.
Yep. Subject to their final review letter, which we're still waiting.
Correct. We've addressed that with them, and they didn't have any additional concerns with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
Can we just go back one?
Sure. Which one, the surety one?
Yeah. It says waiver requested not to require a surety, not to have DPW.
Not to have somebody else hold it.
Yeah. Clarification on that?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Peter Freeman, representing the applicant. Certainly valid point, that is what the request is, but typically, the condition, and Mr. Bobrowski and I have done this before, we would come up with a condition that would be basically something that hopefully we would agree to in terms of the timing of it, perhaps related to need for certificates of occupancy and posting a bond or other surety for what work is not completed, rather than a bond at the outset for the entire cost of the surety, because that can be expensive. So we understand that it's appropriate to have some type of condition, but I would hope that, you know, working with Mr. Bobrowski, you know, we can talk later about drafting the decision, but that's typically how it works out, so just wanted to let you know that.
Okay. We can reword that one. And there's a requirement in the stormwater bylaw that all the stormwater meet the town Franklin subdivision requirements for stormwater. We're not doing a subdivision. We didn't think this was relevant, and a lot of those items are for like town right-ofways, like requiring RCP pipes and, you know, not allowing flat-top manholes, which are standard practice on private property. So we just requested a waiver from the stormwater subdivision requirements. And that is it from the stormwater bylaw.
Okay. My understanding is we're supposed to provide you all the relief that you need from the Wetlands Act? Can't, the contract doesn't give that?
From the local bylaw, not the state, right. Correct, correct.
I know the state bylaw, but they have to, yeah, the local bylaw.
And there are several of these, and we'll try to speak to them intelligently. The wetlands purpose, so these are requirements above and beyond the Wetland Protection Act, which we are required to meet. So it's just definitions of some things. So the requirement is additional functions, characteristics, standards, and procedures under the bylaw. Waiver granted for additional standards and procedures of the bylaw. Proposed work to comply with the requirements of the Mass Wetlands Protection Act. Jurisdiction. Wetland permit local, under local bylaw, has expanded jurisdiction. This waiver is granted for the issuance of a permit under local bylaw issued from the Franklin Conservation Commission. Waiver from local bylaw requirement, project will comply with the Mass Wetlands Protection Act for jurisdiction. Franklin bylaw, no adverse effects from work within 200 feet of a riverfront. Waiver granted for expansion of the impacted area. Proposed work is likely to result in an expansion of impervious area within the riverfront area, and we've provided additional mitigation to offset those impervious areas that we've been working with the conservation commission on. So that is it for the bylaw. This one's for the local wetlands protection regulations.
Can I ask a clarification on the local bylaw, wetlands bylaw? Why can't you meet them? I know, like, you're asking just to meet the mass, but if Franklin goes above and beyond?
We've tried to comply with all of the local Franklin wetland bylaws and regulations. Where we could not meet them is where we have sought a waiver. It's a function of the design. Like, for example, the local bylaw requires a two-to-one ratio for wetland replication of isolated vegetated wetlands. The state doesn't actually have anything about isolated vegetated wetlands. It's not jurisdictional under the state. So under the state, we would not have to replicate any. We were trying to fit enough area on our site to comply with that requirement to replicate at a two-to-one ratio. We ended up meeting it one-to-one. That's the maximum we could fit on the site in terms of replication. So where the local bylaws were more stringent than the state, for example, in that scenario, we tried to meet it to our best of our ability, but in some cases, we couldn't.
Could we, I mean, are there other wetlands locations in Franklin that we could require improvement to meet that two-to-one?
Anybody ever do that, Joe?
Not that I know of, but it's certainly a good idea. I mean, it'd be difficult to condition them having to secure additional rights to do work on a different property, but it's certainly an idea that they can consider, and possibly they have access to a property that has a degraded buffer or degraded wetland that they could restore. A lot of these first three waivers are, they kind of give the Franklin Conservation Commission, under their bylaw, a wide-reaching jurisdiction to do more than the state act requires. So it's hard to quantify the relief that's being sought here. Obviously, on the 200-foot riverfront, the state has protection of the riverfront, but the Franklin goes beyond that and says you can't do anything in the riverfront, no adverse impact. So they have, just in the nature of the beast, they have a riverfront that's degraded, which gives them some liberties under the state act, but not necessarily under the local. So they're asking for a waiver from that. I mean, the board needs, could ask for information, okay? What is, how much of the riverfront are you impacting? How much is already impacted? How much is not? While that, under the state act, that's not your jurisdiction, but under this bylaw provision, local bylaw provision, it is in your court. So you can ask, you know, those questions. What, quantify that. If you're supposed to, under the local bylaw, preserve the entirety of the 200, what are you doing? How much is degraded currently? How much is being improved? Because there is some restoration of riverfront that they're proposing that's degraded, and they're not just taking advantage of that and building on it, but they're actually restoring portions of the riverfront. And then are there, you know, are there portions of the riverfront that are currently not degraded that they're impacting? So a breakdown of that would help the board in understanding, just like when you?
Yeah, so our wetland specialist has been going through this with Beta and the board, and things like the riverfront, like currently on the east side, it's disturbed right up to the buffer. So they're pulling that back, which is kind of the most important, but they pulled the right side in, you know, so that they're offsetting their disturbances with mitigation to invasive species and the wetland and floodplain. And there's a whole range of things we're mitigating as part of this process that Beta and Wetlands?
What they need by degraded riverfront.
If it's without vegetation or topsoil, it's considered degraded.
There's multiple factors that go into that definition, and our wetland protection specialist, he's a wetland scientist, he really handles that for us. He unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. He's, Beta has a whole separate section of peer review solely focused on Wetland Protection Act compliance, and that topic? And that topic, the Riverfront Protection Act, is a topic that we've been rigorously...
Is that one of the three things you're holding out on or something? Or is that one of the three things that is in dispute?
No, sir. I...
Things are in dispute with Beta?
Sorry, he was discussing the stormwater.
Right.
So they separated the wetlands and the stormwater, because it's really two different specialties. Aegis probably could best speak to it. I don't know exactly what's left for the wetlands.
Well, like I noted before, we were hoping we'd have a review letter from Beta prior to the hearing tonight. We had met at our work session a few weeks ago with Beta, the chairman of the Conservation Commission, as well as a commissioner member, myself and Chris Fratton-Roly. It was stated that we would have that letter by tonight. Unfortunately, we don't. I know they're diligently working on it. You know, it's a large project. There's a lot to review, so... What I can say is, from that work session, it was stated that they are... They don't expect to have meaningful, outstanding comments as it relates to wetland protection and this riverfront piece specifically. They had a comment related to a split interpretation of how we need to comply with the Riverfront Protection Act. And we presented evidence and presented additional information. They have not, you know, written a final response letter yet, but from that work session, we thought it went positively, and we expect to be able to adequately respond to all their concerns. So we're just awaiting their...
Is this some of the stuff that may come up in the next Concomit meeting?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, all I'm suggesting here is not for this board to be redundant to what the Conservation Commission and Beta are doing, but when you act on a variance and you're asked to grant relief, you're given the information that the requirement is this, and you're asked to relieve it to this, a setback, 40 feet to 35 feet. So when you're reviewing these waivers, it's good to understand whether they can... The relief can be quantified. So merely saying, if the requirement is no adverse impact in the entirety of the 200 under the local by law, which is under your jurisdiction, for them to merely give you facts and figures with regards to what that has been worked out to be with the Conservation Commission, assuming that the Conservation Commission, under their jurisdiction of the riverfront, is going to approve it in the manner that it's there, just so that you understand that, okay, 75% of the riverfront is going to be preserved, or whatever it's... You know, whatever those numbers are, just to be able to give you the ability to deliberate on acting on the waiver.
Yeah, I think we have the ability to answer most of those, but some of them are kind of definitions of functions and characteristics that have to be more narrative than an actual number like a setback. Do you want to continue?
They'll all be in Beta's report?
They'll all be discussed in Beta's, all the concerns that they had originally. And it'll probably go through this after we get that again.
Well, we might as well just go through it now, because if you get us to think from Beta and everything's all set, then we know what we're talking about.
I just want to note that Brika Lee has her hand up.
Brika Lee, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to let the board know that I'm actually here. There are a couple revisions that I have for the record and for clarity about some things that have been said about where we are in the process and the by law and what's required on the Wetlands Protection Act. Happy to wait, but again, just wanted to let the board know that I was here.
Okay, thank you. If you hear anything, Brika, you want to speak up, just go ahead and do it.
Okay, actually, I have just two things. Degraded riverfront area, that's actually mandated under the Wetlands Protection Act, not our by law. So those numbers are protected already or discussed, for what it's worth, which is what your representative from Hancock had said. I would like to stress, obviously, that the Concomit would like to maintain jurisdiction as much as possible, to at least have a conversation. I also wanted to note that IFW's isolated vegetated wetlands are protected under the Wetlands Protection Act, up to a certain size, starting at a certain size of which they are not at this property.
Okay, thank you.
We were at the top here. This is a carryover, so the next... No, no, it's that one.
This one?
Yes, no.
This one, okay.
Yes, that one. So now we're on to the next section, this section.
This is the Franklin Wetlands Protection Regulations.
Protection what?
This is on the top of the next page, under the section waivers from the Town of Franklin Wetland Protections Regulations.
This requirement is for additional performance standards under the by law. They're requested for a waiver for compliance with by law performance standards. Project to be subject to the wetlands standards as regulated by the Mass Wetlands Protection Act. This one is the 25 no disturbance, no disturb buffer zone protections. Waiver granted for work within the 25-foot no disturb zone. Work in the 25 no disturb buffer zone is extremely limited and consists primarily of reuse of previously degraded riverfront and/or restoration of previously degraded riverfront area.
So you're fixing up the riverfront, but you're going to be within 25 feet?
Correct. There's going to be work almost up to the wetland line in some areas. 25 to 50-foot no structure buffer zone. Waiver granted for work in the 25 to 50 no structure buffer zone is requested. Work in the 25 to 50-foot no structure buffer zone to consist primarily of reuse of previously degraded riverfront area and/or restoration of previously degraded riverfront area. And this area in the act, it says it may be permitted under 4.32 if disturbed prior to 2006. This is a waiver for work within 50 to 100-foot buffer zone of protected areas. Waiver granted for work resulting in greater than 30% impervious area within the 50 to 100-foot buffer zone. Work in the 50 to 100-foot buffer zone may result in greater than 30% impervious surface area. Impervious surfaces will be located in previously degraded riverfront area to the greatest extent possible, and stormwater management will be provided for the Mass DEP stormwater guidelines. The next one is a requirement for procedure for requesting variances from the by law regulations. Waiver granted for the variance request requirement. This is administrative, applicable by law provisions and regulations hereunder expected to be waived, therefore rendering this section unnecessary. This is basically granting you the approval of the waivers. Waiver requested for local filing fee. Waiver granted for local NOI filing fee. Waiver from local Conservation Commission regulations. Project will comply with Mass Wetlands Protection Act requirements. Franklin Wetlands by law, some point one. Submittal of a mitigation plan. Waiver granted for submittal of mitigation plan for wetlands buffer zone impacts. Mitigation required for compliance within the Mass Wetlands Protection Act has been provided. Submittal for alternatives analysis. Waiver granted for alternatives analysis, submittal for riverfront resource area and alteration of riparian zone. Waiver from local regulation requirements for alternatives analysis. Alternatives analysis for work in the riverfront area has been included in the notice of intent. Replication ratio two-to-one functions and values included in replication plan and protocol. Waiver granted for evaluation of functions and values of lost wetland and inclusion of these functions and values in replication plan protocol. Replication at two-to-one ratio, replication provided at less than two-to-one ratio. Waiver from local regulations requirement. Project will comply with the Mass Wetlands Protection Act. Construction sequence and schedule. Waiver granted for submittal of construction sequence and schedule on plan set. Waiver from local regulations requirements.
What's that? Doesn't sound... Doesn't sound... Waiver granted for submittal of construction sequence and schedule plan. Waiver from a local regulation plan. You're supposed to present a schedule and a plan set?
It's construction sequence and schedule on the plan set. We requested this to be condition of approval to Beta, and we're waiting on their feedback, so we're expecting it to be condition of approval if Beta and the commission approve.
This one is waiver by law support. Information to be shown on plan, so this waiver requirement that plans show existing vegetation, i.e., lawn cultivated herbaceous and woody plant areas, uncultivated fields, scrub and woodland areas, and woody plants larger than one inch diameter proposed to be removed. This is a waiver from local regulations. Obviously, a site of this size would be difficult to show all the plants greater than one inch. This one is... Is this the same one or this new one? Okay, this is a new regulation. Chapter 271 Franklin Conservation Commission Regulations. Waiver requested for the project to be subject solely to the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act and regulations thereunder. Waiver granted allowing the project to be subject solely to the WPA and regulations thereunder. Waiver from local Conservation Commission regulations. Project will comply with Mass Wetlands Protection Act. This is procedural of vote requirement. Waiver from local Conservation Commission. The project will comply with the Wetlands Protection Act. This is another vote in motion administrative waiver for the Concomit. As the waiver from local Conservation Commission Regulations, project will comply with Mass Wetlands Protection Act. Definition of key terms in Town Wetland Protection by law. Definition of terms under the by law. Waiver granted from local by law definitions and requirements to the extent these vary from the WPA and regulations thereunder. Waiver from local Conservation Commission Regulations. Project will comply with the Mass Protection Act. This is basically the definitions don't... The term for wetland might not be the same in the two different bylaws. And then the last one is a waiver of the subdivision land regulations. This is a waiver to allow the ZBA to approve our A&R plan as opposed to the planning board. This is another administrative waiver to allow this board to approve that A&R plan. And that's it.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just some input. With regard to the submittal of a mitigation plan, they're obviously working closely with the Conservation Commission and Brika and Beta to... If the Conservation Commission is inclined to approve the project, then it's going to have quite a bit of mitigation embedded in it. Now, withstanding Brika's call to retain as much jurisdiction under the local by law by the Conservation Commission, that's just not what's happening here. Jurisdiction under the local by law is with you. But you can take input from the Conservation Commission. So if the Conservation Commission is of a mindset that the mitigation that they've negotiated or that they're required of the applicant is sufficient to meet the state act and, to some degree, has components in it that mitigate the waivers that they're requesting, and the waivers that I'm keying on are the ones that are quantifiable. The two-to-one, the 25-foot no disturb, the 25 to 50, the 50 to 100. If that is all, in the opinion of the Conservation Commission, somewhat mitigating for those waivers, for that incursion deeper into buffer zones and so forth, then having that plan in your record that you could then refer to with regards to input from the Conservation Commission and this mitigation plan that is providing potentially justification for grant of these waivers, these quantifiable waivers, then your record is complete.
You get that, Brika?
Sorry, I had to click super fast on you. I did.
Attorney Bobrowski said... The only reason why I ask is because Attorney Bobrowski said that we're the only ones with the right to waive those waivers. Because I asked him, why can't the Conservation Commission waive? And he said, no, it says it has to come from us. So I just want to make sure you're on board with all that, so.
That works for us. We can provide a response letter like we typically have done in past.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask, so an example of a quantifiable item in here is this work in the 50 to 100-foot buffer zone may result in greater than 30% impervious surface area. We can ask for a plan that shows the amount of impervious...
Gives that number. It's 35, it's 40, it's whatever.
Like what percentage is, what that...
Right, but I'm not suggesting that the board, all of a sudden, become educated enough to dive into the very complicated conservation issue. But quantifying it is important, and then getting that mitigation plan. So I would deny the waiver for submittal of the mitigation plan and say, just submit the mitigation plan that you're working out with the Conservation Commission, and provide the quantification of the relief that you're being sought, and the input from the Conservation Commission that, yeah, this is the mitigation plan that we have worked out with them that is, to a degree, justifying the waivers.
To answer your question, we have that plan, the document, and yes, we happy to do that. The request was to submit it. Was that the... I'm sorry.
The request for the waiver is you're waiving the submission of the mitigation plan. I'm suggesting that the board, either you withdraw that and submit the mitigation plan as to support the waiver, the other way.
Mr. Chairman, and I think I understand what Joe's saying. I don't think that the waiver should be denied, because that would mean that we have to submit it to the Conservation Commission under their possibly most stringent bylaws and regulations. So that is why the waiver is requested. We don't object. We don't object to submitting the mitigation plan to you, and there'll be commentary, as you said, Mr. Chairman, or Joe, I forget who said that, but from the Conservation Commission. You know, I think that in the course of the continuing and hopefully soon-completed Conservation Commission hearing under the WPA, that that would be worked out satisfactorily, so that would make it easier for you that there's a plan that the Conservation Commission has essentially agreed to. So that's why we still want the waiver, but we're not saying we won't present a plan.
That's... Thank you, Peter.
All right, open after the board. Any questions? Comments? Got you. Waiver. Megan, any question?
No questions from me, Mr. Chairman.
Chanel, any question?
This new site plan that we've just gotten, it doesn't require any setback waivers from property lines? Because I didn't see any dimensional waivers other than from streams and ponds. And height.
It does need a waiver for a garage. And, yeah, there is a side guard setback requirement.
For building and for the garage?
For the building.
It applies to the building on the westernmost side of the site, where the vacant commercial land is. Who, the owner of that property, we've talked to, and we provided a chain link fence along that side of the property per his request. And I think he did indicate in a letter to the board that he was generally supportive of the project.
Actually, I do have a question. So the... Looking at the elevation here for that three-story building that's going to be on the eastern side, you know, the four-story building that's west of that?
Is next to the river.
Is next to the River Ray. What is its elevation relative... What is its relevant elevation, you know, relative to the, to this building, to the three-story building?
How much higher is it than the 38 feet?
That building will be up to 50 feet.
Would that be, you know, kind of looking from, you know, the Red Gate Lane, would you see the, the four-story building, you know, past the three-story building? Or, you know, I'm just curious about what it would look like.
If, if you refer to the memo we submitted on page two, and we previously presented this to the board and submitted it in a larger format, there's the conceptual illustrative sectional diagram. And that diagram shows, let me pull it up.
That's on the grid, isn't it? You got the same one that you just mentioned?
Yeah, I, I mean, I.
Okay, sorry. So this building here is the proposed three-story building. And we showed it because it's the one that's closest to the abutters. The other four-story building that you are referencing is, is, is a good distance away. So if you put 10 feet on top of this structure here, that's where approximately the four-story building is.
Okay.
So it's, it's about 48 feet, so it's 13 and a half. Waivers for 50 because of some mechanical equipment. We probably need just a little bit of extra cushion and play, given we're in the conceptual stages still.
48 feet with a peak or 48 feet, that's, is that going to have a flat roof also?
To the, flat roof, with a flat roof, correct. With, that's.
What about the ones on the other side of the water?
Flat roof. Everything, all is, everything is flat roof.
Okay. Thank you.
Where is that waiver for the, the property line setback?
Ms. Lang, we, we needed, we need to add that to the waiver list separately. We have it on the plan in the table that we submitted. We should have put it separately here on the waiver list. So that's our mistake. We'll make sure we add that.
Okay, so this is an incomplete waiver list that we?
This waiver list was updated, but apologies, we missed it. We do need that side yard waiver, so we'll add it. Simple as that.
Yeah, it's shown on the plan we submitted in the table that was attached to the letter. We just didn't, we just didn't carry it over to that list, so I apologize.
When you resubmit them, can you number them?
Sure.
And then any that are like all interrelated? You can number them like four, A, B, C? I don't know. I was just thinking if there's something, some easy way for us to reference as we are reviewing.
Well, it'll be for Joe to look at when we give him the whole plan review.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Sometimes I've done that, and on this one, we didn't, but certainly at least the numbering, and if there are some sub items where it makes sense to say four, A, B, and C, you know, sure, we'll do that.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but this, what we're doing here now is, like he said, they're going to get the plans done later. This is a conceptual project. And once everything is all, when they get their approval, that's when they go and do the final, final plan. Plans don't come out until they get ready for construction. Every plan isn't going to have everything on it that you want by the time, you know, it comes to us. Is that right, Peter?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. All right. Did you have anything?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Everybody still with us?
I'm Gus Brown, the Building Commissioner. And actually Gary Love, who's in the audience, had me research some things for him, and I just want to go over it real quickly. I don't want to keep people here all night, but I want to go through this. I recently spoke with Mark Bobowski. Mark is our attorney that we hired to handle this process for the town. We brought up, he brought up good points about 444 East Central Street. Mark also brought up a case that was heard by the SJC and Peter, Peter Freeman?
Yes, sir. That's Peter Freeman.
Peter, if you hear me say anything erroneously about what I'm going to say, I want you to correct me, okay?
Thank you.
This case was Boothroyd versus the Amherst ZBA. This happened back in 2007. I realize that this has been an unpopular project, but I want to go through all this so people have an idea of what could come and how to proceed with the decision when it comes. I will say this also, Mark Bobowski will gather together all of the experts at some point, and we're getting close to that. And again, like I said, Mark Bobowski is our attorney for the town. He'll get together the, the traffic study experts, the engineer, and all those who provided expert testimony about the site and who will draft a decision based on that meeting. So now I'm going to read this SJC decision from Amherst, Mass. And I want to be clear that this is directed at Gary. Gary brought up the HAC appeal. This is not an HAC, HAC appeal that I'm going to read you. This is an SJC decision that they appealed to the Supreme Judicial Court. In the town of Amherst, a question recently arose as to whether a local Board of Appeals may employ the regional needs test or whether the zoning laws must be imposed in the usual way once a municipality has satisfied, has satisfied one of the statutory minima. At issue in Boothroyd versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Amherst was the grant of a comprehensive permit for 26 units, notwithstanding the fact that Amherst had already reached its 10% threshold. The zoning board found a continued need for affordable housing in Amherst despite the satisfaction of the statutory requirement as evidenced by the 870 families on the waiting list who would have to wait three to six years for affordable housing in town. The court conducted a thorough satisfaction, a thorough statutory construction analysis held that the local Board of Appeals has discretion to decide whether or not to impose local zoning laws once the minimum has been satisfied. The court further held that its interpretation would not compromise local autonomy as local boards in 10%, communities maintain the discretion to impose zoning requirements as they choose to do. And remember, the review was done and comments came from our expert-appointed and elected officials. That review was a non-binding cursory review from our town boards. And remember, Wayne Stobart came to us. All of our elected officials and appointed, and appointed, all our elected and appointed officials and staff have an enormous task of running a almost $200 million business, which is the town of Franklin, and have done a damn good job of it because of the services that we provide and the love that everyone has for this town. Now, what are the possible grounds for denial? That would be not meeting the compliance with federal and state health and safety regulations, site conditions, and building designs. I'm going to read this one more thing. This is from the HAC. And the heading, the heading from this handbook is denial. I'm sorry to be long-winded, but I feel this is important. Chapter 40B authorizes ZBA to approve as proposed. Approve the conditions or deny a comprehensive permit application. The HAC will not overturn local denial of a comprehensive permit if the city or town meets one of the statutory minima or another safe harbor under the 40B regulations. Except for these circumstances, however, the HAC has generally not supported denials and the ZBA could have granted a comprehensive permit with reasonable conditions to protect health, safety, and open space and site and building design concerns. Accordingly, ZBA should view denial of comprehensive permit as a last resort. I'm sorry to say that, but this is written in the handbook. Measure to be taken only when there is no practical way to approve the project with conditions. Thank you.
Gino, you want to read your letter? No, no, Gino, Gino.
Sorry.
He's the only one with that side of the, he's the only one on, he's the only one on that side of the aisles, you know, so we'll have to read it as we go on.
Okay, I'm not going to read the letter, but just continuing to express my support for the, of the need for housing in Franklin. And I wanted to do, I thought it might be useful to do some research on fiscal impacts of the project compared, compared to other possible developments there. So the parcel, subject parcel is about 15 acres. The abutting properties on Red Gate Lane, those lots, if you add them up, are a little over 15 acres, not counting the road, so that's a little bit bigger. Those 20 properties are assessed at 17 and a half million. They generate 200,000 in taxes. A similar apartment complex, Station 117, it's a little, it's a 257 unit, so it's a comparable number of units. It's a little bit larger parcel at 23 acres. It's assessed right now at 75 million and generates 875,000 in taxes per year. And beyond that, it was sold in 2021 for 129 million. Why the assessment is lagging that sale price, I don't know, but at 129, 129 million, it would, it would generate one and a half million in taxes. So I just wanted to make that point. I think approving the project both addresses the housing need and is a step forward in financial sustainability for the town. So, thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Okay, Gene.
Sometimes people call me Gino as well. Gene Grau, 36, Red Gate Lane. I have written a letter that basically responds to Gino's letter, so that is in, been submitted to the ZBA site. So I just want to let you know that. About a year ago, I created an online petition on the project at 444 East Central Street. The petition stated, by signing this petition, we call upon our local planning and zoning authorities to reconsider this proposal for the sake of Franklin's future. To date, we have had over 1,300 signers to that petition. In June of this year, the Franklin Observer did a survey for readers asking if they were for or against the project at 444 East Central Street. Over 1,300 people responded to that survey. Here are the results. Should the town support the construction of 264 units at 444 East Central Street? 91.75% said no. The people in the survey who answered no were asked what their reason was. The number one answer was traffic, followed by people worried about the burden it put on town services. Last question that was asked by the survey, do you think town government has listened or will listen to your concerns? 89% said no. This week, I submitted a petition to the town clerk signed by 896 residents and voters of the town of Franklin. The idea behind the petition is we went to get signatures mostly at the farmer's market. And the idea was not that, that, you know, total number of residents, but the fact that to show that we had voices from throughout the community. So you can look at the addresses that those come from, and you can find where those, those people live, and that it wasn't just the abutters who were concerned, but it's throughout the whole town. Here's what the, what the petition says. It says, "We, the undersigned residents of the town of Franklin, respectfully submit this petition to express our strong opposition to the proposed friendly 40B development of 264 apartment units at 444 East Central Street, the current site of Stobart's nurseries. We further request the town council formally rescind its prior vote of support for this project and notify all relevant state agencies for the withdrawal of municipal endorsement. We request that the ZBA deny the comprehensive permit for the project and that all government agencies oppose any waivers to town bylaws regarding building height, wetland, stormwater, and well water protections." We have heard three times from the people of Franklin on this topic. If this is a true friendly 40B project, shouldn't the ZBA be representing the people of Franklin? And it shouldn't they be dictating, shouldn't you be dictating the terms of this project? You've heard from us, and you know what we want, but I'll remind you. First off, the local need is for housing residents can own, not rent. We have plenty of vacant apartments, but very little affordable housing stock for homeownership. But if it has to be apartments, we want a small project with less impacted wetlands, stormwater, or abutting neighbors, and public well. We want reduced building heights and adequate parking for residents. We want adequate buffers for the neighbors. If the owner of the property and the developer cannot turn that into a financially viable project, that is their problem. Maybe the Stobarts need to sell the land for less in order to make a smaller project work financially. But it's not right for the people of Franklin, who are part of the 20% of communities in Massachusetts with over 10% affordable housing, to have to throw out our town bylaws in order to make this project work financially for the developer and the current resident. Thank you.
Right on, Keith. All right.
Thank you. Gary Love, 39, Red Gate Lane. Thanks, Gus, for digging into that. I'm not 100% sure I captured all the nuances of the conclusion, but what, what was asked, I have really three, a three-part question. I like to just read the questions, and then we'll see if there's answers or get answers later. But alluding to what Gus was saying, and I think it still holds true, there, there seems to be a, a shadow, a kind of a cloud hanging over a lot of these proceedings about, boy, if we don't say yes, boy, if we don't do what they need to do, it just gets appealed and, and then the state takes over and everything happens, so we lose control. And that's what I was asking Gus and the point of this, because I don't want that hanging over our heads if we don't need it to be there. If we do, we do, but the, the handbook did say that the Housing Appeals Committee Appeals Process is that Chapter 40B gives the Housing Appeals Committee, the HAC, authority to adjudicate appeals arising from the ZBA's denial or conditional approval of a comprehensive permit. However, the HAC's discretion to overturn local decisions applies only to cases involving a city or town that has not met its regional fair share obligations under the statute. If the city or town meets one of those statutory minima, the HAC is required to uphold the decisions as consistent with local needs. The statutory minima include, and there were three, but the main one is if the number of low or moderate income housing units in the community exceeds 10% of the total number of housing units reported in the most recent federal decennial census. That's what it says. This 40B apparently is, you know, very rigid, as well as with timelines. It's 180 days to close the hearing from the first public hearing unless extended. I think we've extended at least until November. My question there, you know, my question on the first one is, does that mean we really have the control? We don't have to worry about being appealed and overturned by the HAC? 180 days, my question, and then there's 40 days from there to make a decision. If those dates aren't met, does that mean the ZBA and the town loses any influence over what happens? In other words, it's deemed this is approved?
Means they can apply for constructive grant.
And, and we can't really, I, I just want to be clear, we can't do anything.
You can fight any.
We can fight it, but, but if we don't meet those timelines, it seems that.
Just to let your timeline thing go to rest here.
Yeah.
Mark and Attorney Freeman agree that we'll have a decision one way or the other by December 31st.
December 31st, okay. So that, that's.
Is that right, Peter?
Yes, I did talk to Mark today, in fact, and slight clarification, he agreed that the decision would be filed with the town clerk by December 31st, which means you'd have to close and deliberate and have it all done and written and filed, which I still, still think there's plenty of time to do that. At the end, obviously, we'll discuss closing or another hearing or whatever, but yes, filed with the town clerk by December 31st.
Okay. And, and then does the Conservation Commission's approval impact those timelines? In other words, that hasn't come yet? Like if that doesn't come for a while, do they all get pushed back or not?
The way they're talking, the way BRICA talks, it sounds like it's pretty close. I would suspect that maybe, they got a meeting, I think, next week, so maybe they'll get with the, what are you looking for, an NOI there or something?
An order of conditions.
So that's the next step. So if they get that, then they're done. You know, we have all the information we need based upon what they're coming up with.
Okay. Because the reason I'm asking these is it really seems like, you know, trying to understand exactly why we as a town want to, it really feels like shoehorned this large project into a very, as you've said, sensitive area that's very complicated, even with the state apparently complicated, why we need to say yes or worry about what conditions. That's all, and that's the sense I get. So that's why I brought them up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
If I could just clarify two things. The first point by Mr. Love, I don't know when that handbook was written, but at the very big.
2017.
2017 update.
So the regulation that.
So, the regulation that was dealt with at the very beginning of this hearing, that is not actually true. And the Boothroyd, Boothroyd case, which Mr. Brown recited, stands for the fact that if you deal with a 40B, as opposed to deny it, because you, and you claim the safe harbor, and remember at the beginning, it was discussed publicly, you did not claim the safe harbor. So the regulation is now very clear that that means that you don't, you unilaterally have the right to deny or condition with no review by the HAC. That's why that regulation was written. And essentially, the Boothroyd case says that, that if you are dealing with a project and you have the substantive hearings, even though the town is above 10%, you still are obligated to weigh the factors under the consistent with local need standards, so that you are both empowered, and, you know, unless the standard, unless there's an adverse impact that is so strong, strongly negative, which is a consistent with local need standard, you would be obligated to grant the waiver. So I wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, that's exactly the question I would like our own attorneys to answer, because the way I read that, safe harbor was a different condition if you do conditional. But when I didn't say harbor, this is before safe harbor, and I read what it says, and I haven't seen anybody update it or an official update, maybe it is, so I'd like our town attorneys, because this is a big deal, I think, hanging over our head. Every time we meet, it's like, oh, boy, if we don't do this, it's going to get appealed. And we do know the state and HAC, I have read it, they pretty much uphold the developers' plans. Once it gets to them, they usually say, yep, do what you want to do. And so I don't deny that.
That's the feedback I get from...
Yeah, so I think we need to know it as a fact, because I'd like to make sure our decisions are made in the truth of interest, in other words. If that's true, and the HAC, we might have to, you might have to kind of figure out how to negotiate or something. But if that's not true, then I think it gives us a lot more freedom to act in the town's best interest, which we just heard from Gene and others, the town's really not supporting this gigantic project in this question.
Stephen Loy, Rusty Hill Road. Local needs, with kind of fundamental turning point on the potential rejection of this from the ZBA's perspective. Local needs is the impact on quality of life in and around Franklin by this project. I've been here many times, others have made the same point, this project's way too big in conjunction, in conjunction with everything else that we've done, and it really does diminish the overall quality of life for people in Franklin, which is maybe one of the most fundamental local needs that we have. We don't need the additional apartments, we already meet the threshold. The whole safe harbor process was kind of a mess from the beginning, but we'll put that aside. The true issue here is the local need, and people are against it. The issue's not going away. People hate this, and I think you have the latitude, as part of that local need assessment, to consider quality of life. Most people moved to Franklin because it was single-family residences, nice subdivisions, nice lots. Probably many people wouldn't have moved here today if they had all of the apartment buildings that are going up on 140, and God knows what else is planned. We're a suburb. It's a great suburb, it's a great town. We shouldn't change that just because of some, you know, preconceived need that we need more housing, but we've already met the threshold. So I think that's a fundamental local need that needs to be respected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Richard Stroud from 10 Hayden Lane. I wanted to push back a bit on the idea that the potential hazards of this project have been dealt with and put to bed, and in particular, two of them. One of them that has been raised in the past is the possible flooding hazard, Longus Brook at Cook's Farm. There was a recent technical memorandum, it actually just came out a week ago, that's been filed on the website of the zoning board, and it, it has a couple of interesting points. One of the points it made, is it actually did an analysis, and I appreciate this finally being done, of what the flooding hazard was at the Northern Spy Road and Cook's Farm, and they pointed out that the town was right to be concerned, that there is in fact a current flooding hazard, and that in fact, it is a flooding hazard in the order of a 20% level, as it currently stands before any construction. All right? The, so the second point, which is relevant, is that what's the, was the potential impact of the construction? And the, the claim was, is that in spite of adding the impervious area, and in spite of adding in the areas that, that is being put, the stormwater mitigation method would be enough, the claim was, to prevent any further damage. And therefore, because of that, basically, it wasn't the problem of the developer. And so I'd like to suggest that it may or may not be the problem of the developer, but it is in fact the problem I would hope the zoning board would think about. What the, what this memorandum dated October 16th from Beal and Associates says is there, that we are sort of on the knife edge of potential flooding problems at that site. And so the question is, what happens if any of the assumptions that went into the analysis that say there is no additional flooding hazard turn out not to be quite right? What happens in fact if relying on historical rain patterns, which they have to do, in fact isn't right, because in fact, there's continuing climate change, there's continuing change in the amount of rain? What happens if that is, that needs to be thought about? What happens if in fact the storm, the culverts that are there to pour away the excess stormwater are in fact, are not maintained in the way they are promised to be maintained? In a couple of years down the line, they can't mitigate this water. So what happens is, you know, we have a situation where there's still this possibility of flooding, and the question I want to consider, the zoning board to consider, is why do they want to put the town of Franklin, or the residents of the town of Franklin at risk when things are so close to being dangerous right now? Second point I wanted to make concerns, that's something also that we thought of as being put to bed, which I suggest respectfully is not, and that concerns traffic. So the, the traffic engineer's report came to the conclusion, which probably seems puzzling to the town residents, to common sense, that adding what at the time was 260-some apartments, now 250-some apartments, wouldn't cause any significant effect on the traffic. And people are scratching their heads, well, how can that be? So, may I finish the sentence?
Yeah, right.
All right. So the, so, you know, the, it was constructed from a mathematical model, and I'm not about to dispute that model, but if you look at the assumptions in this report dated May 30th, 2025, the assumptions don't actually, are somewhat puzzling. For example, they assume that typically during rush hour in the morning, about 90 cars will come out of this development. So that's about a third of, coming from about a third of the units. Now, I assume they're not saying that about two-thirds of the units don't go to commute to work, don't send their kids to school, or take their kids to school, don't run errands. It seems like a fairly low number for this rental development, and I submit that if that number were reconsidered, you wouldn't end up with no traffic changes. It just doesn't make sense, common sense, to think there'd be no traffic impact of that many cars coming out of that narrow place on one street. It's, you know, and so the only way is that I, I think you can understand that, is the assumptions, I think, should be reconsidered. And I think, I urge the zoning board to think from their own perspective, whether the assumptions they made are really reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Renee Love, 39, Red Gate Lane.
So I'm actually going to read a letter on behalf of my next door neighbor, which is Susan Rappas. She wasn't able to be here tonight, so I'm reading this on her behalf. "Good evening, ZBA members. I emailed a letter to the ZBA members on Monday, but I am unsure if it was ever received or read. I'm writing again to formally object to the apartment complex proposal at 444 East Central Street, Stobarts. Throughout this process, many residents, myself included, feel our voices have been sidelined. Despite strong public opposition for many valid reasons, this project remains under review. Pink flags related to this project are now just 33, 30 feet from my property line. The developer has recently revised it to 40 feet. Please understand that both 30 or 40 feet is too close to a single-family home to put three and/or four-story buildings, plus all of the required parking. A picture of my property line in relation to the construction work zone flag is below." That was attached to her letter. "This is very concerning, as it is too close to single-family homes. I urge you to review the proposed plans carefully and to ensure that parking, that the parking lot, as well as three- and four-story buildings that are hundreds of feet long, are not allowed to be built so close to the abutting single-family home property lines. I understand that the developer wants to make as much money as possible, but why, as ZBA members, you are even open to agreeing with this design for this large apartment complex to be built? Please hear what the majority of Franklin taxpayers and other Franklin officials are saying, that we don't want this, and it's simply too large for this particular area. There are many concerns, including but not limited to the already overcrowding of apartment units in this area of town. Please note that the Taj currently has 30% of units available for rent, more traffic congestion along Route 140, destruction of wetlands, and potential harm to nearby town well. These apartments do not help Franklin or its residents, but instead, it does the complete opposite. It will drain more of the resources that are already in short supply, which many residents have felt the effects of. Many Franklin residents also have mentioned this project being the main reason they did not vote for an override. If this project is built and another override is asked of us, one can only assume what the results would be. You, as a ZBA, do not have to say yes to this developer. You can simply deny the project, or if the developer does not like the proposal that you put forth for a smaller, lower-level complex, they can look elsewhere to build. Somewhere that will not require 30 waivers to be approved, is not on top of wetlands and nearby wells, single-family homes, and in an already overbuilt section of town. Please consider the current town residents. We are counting on you to do the right thing. So much trust between residents and town officials and committees has been broken. We ask that you please hear us and our concerns about this project." So Sue wanted me to also show this picture, which I'll put up, but the, it's really hard to get perspective of this. There's a lot of vegetative growth there, and you really can't get the, an accurate perception of how close that is to her property line. So, in lieu of that photo, can I have just one more minute? In lieu of that photo, I wanted to offer a different visual. As Sue mentioned in her letter, this massive project will sit 40 feet from the Rappas property line. 40 feet. So it can be really hard to get a sense of what that means without seeing it in person. So if you imagine a school bus, that's the distance between this towering multi-story development and her property line. One school bus. So as you deliberate this project, please bear that in mind. This project in its current state will cause an irreparable and negative impact to so many residents and our quality of life. Please, please, don't allow that to happen. Thank you.
We have somebody online that wants to speak, but I can't remember his name, but...
It's Mark Minichelli. But first, I just want to say, I, at least I got Susan's letter and saw the picture with the pink flags, and I guess that was just a question that I figured if the site plan's all changed, and it's been reflagged out there, and go look at it again, like, has that, have those flags?
I don't think it's been reflagged.
No, it has not been reflagged, and we weren't intending to reflag it.
Since we did the balloon test, right?
Correct. We just did it for the balloon test.
But those lines with the yellow ribbons on them were the ones that were, that was the limit of excavation.
So nothing's been changed?
Though, we, those flags have been out there for a long time. I, I haven't monitored them, I don't know if they've been moved, I don't know, I haven't looked at them since the balloon study.
It has the day of when we did the balloon test.
The day of the balloon study.
Whatever was there was representative of what the work line is going to be.
The limit of work, correct. And that was drastically increased by a third approximately, based on the alternative plan we submitted this morning.
You mean since the balloon test?
Since the balloon test. We've brought in the limit of work by a third.
Can I just put that in perspective? That means 30 feet to 40 feet. That's 10 feet. I mean, I can watch that here, but that's, that's 10 feet. And I'd just like to say one other thing about that balloon test. Come do that test in another month, when all the leaves are down, and all vegetation's dying down, because it is a completely different situation than it is in the peak of summer and when everything is cool, please.
Can I clarify one thing on that point? That is the, to the limit of work? The building is far, further than that from, from the property line. I also just want to touch on, we are installing approximately $30,000 of new trees to serve as vegetated buffer, along the buffer. We saved a significant amount of existing trees. There's already a ton there, and we saved more with this alternative change that we presented tonight. We are also installing a, a screening fence, as requested by the abutters. I also met with Ms. Rappas personally to see if there was anything I could do for her to put trees on her property if she'd like. I offered to do that for her, because her home is the only one that's directly facing our project. The other homes next door to her are facing a different direction, and there is so much buffer in between us and them, in terms of vegetation, that they're not directly facing our project. And then lastly, as you can see on screen, this elevation difference of 19 feet, even if, to your point, Member Whitmore, if, if this was a four-story building, it would still be shorter to the top of roof compared to their houses next door to us on Red Gate Lane, to the top of their roofs. So I just wanted to put that into perspective a little bit. Thank you.
Mark, going online, did you want to speak?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I have a question for the developer, and then a couple of comments. And I'm sorry, I must, I may have missed these numbers earlier. What are the new proposals, number of units, and number of affordable units?
The, the new total number of units is proposed at 254. The new total affordable units is proposed at 64.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So, so Mr. Carlucci is not alone in, in terms of a different perspective tonight from the public. I just want to make a couple of points in, in support of the project. First of all, I don't think, I don't think our, our decision point should be whether or not we meet a 10% threshold number that was established in the 1960s. I, I think we have to ask ourselves, have we reached the level of affordability that we want to have here in Franklin? And from my perspective, the answer is clearly no. So projects like this, that provide additional affordable units to our housing inventory, are greatly important. I also would want to reemphasize the point that Gino Carlucci was making earlier. I hear a lot of comments about how this project is going to be a drain on Franklin resources. I disagree with that. I'd like to see actual data that suggests that, and actually, to the opposite of that, the kinds of studies that Gino has provided will shows that a project like this can provide a significant additional revenue to the town of Franklin. And these are, this additional revenue is exactly what we need in these days of fiscal crisis. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I just jumped in for like one comment.
Okay, go ahead, and then we're going to start.
All right.
Can I get a pick you want to respond? Everybody's talked, except the big guy, I don't think he's talking.
He wants to... This is going to be really quick.
Shouldn't it be best for less?
Gene Grau, 36, Red Gate Lane. Do you know what percentage of Massachusetts towns and communities meet that 10% requirement?
Well, I know, I don't know.
It's 20%. That means 80% don't meet it. So why are we the ones that continue to build affordable housing when 80% of the rest of the communities in Massachusetts should be the ones that are building this stuff? That's all I want to say.
I can tell you two good reasons. One of those is the developer has a relationship with the landlord. The landlord has owned, has been on that land all his life, probably wants to retire. Maybe they made him a deal that he couldn't refuse, I don't know, but that's, you're asking the question I'm just trying to answer.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate this forum, and, you know, I moved to Franklin about a year and a half ago with my family. We moved here because we were really attracted to what Franklin represents, and to hear the whole community come forward, and that nice survey done by Gene showing that the majority of people, over 90%, really disapprove of this project.
I just got you on one thing. 90% of what were the people that he had said that.
One in four.
90% of the people in Franklin.
Yeah, go to the farmer's market.
If you want to take what he gave us, because I've done it before, the first one he gave us, there was like 2.8% of the people. And then there was another one with 1,100, but that might have gone to 3%. So out of 32,000 people, 3% of those people, you know, are against it.
What's 37,000 people, our population, 37,000 in the town of Franklin?
I don't know, I think it's...
Yeah, so that, you know, that's...
It's not 37,000.
But that's still a percentage representation of the population.
Well, then if the percentage goes down even more, then it would be...
So I'm one of the young families that moved to Franklin and brought my family here, and, you know, to hear our community say, hey, this is our voice, we want representation, and that's why I'm here. I want representation for my voice, from the majority of Franklin residents and constituents. And I appreciate you holding the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We're going to continue this until November 20th.
The dates are...
November 20th.
Question, and I apologize because it's totally based on my schedule. Let me just pull up November again. I looked at it over dinner, but is it probably...
Mike's not going to be here on the 20th, so, you know.
Yeah.
But he may have some answers for it.
Is there any chance of doing it on November 13th when I don't have a conference?
No, because we don't get the rule. You know, somebody else is in here. Concombs on our, on our off Thursday, the concombs. We schedule, we schedule a year right ahead.
Let me ask you this, based on what you said earlier, because I think that could be a time when the hearing is closed. I think the important thing is, and I already agreed with what you said, that Mark Bobrowski has said, and if the board agrees, we will agree, that we want the decision to be filed by December 31st.
Okay.
So the exact date of the next hearing, although we'd like to have it sooner rather than later, but it's not super critical. So, you know, it's too bad. Well, we love Thanksgiving.
If we do November 20th, we have a meeting in, I think it's December 18th or something. So if you're worried about we're not going to meet before the end of December 31st, we will. And I'm sure that, you know, before that, maybe on the 20th, the 20th, we can get Mark working on some sort of...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if...
Casey's just looking up the date. December?
December 4th.
No, what's the next, 18th?
December 18th.
That's what I thought, December 18th.
What would that be? What would December 18th be?
Well, December 24th would be, or 20th would, you know, Mark would, hopefully, we're going to be in a position where we can tell them.
What I would say is this, I think we should schedule the next hearing for November 20th. If it seems suitable to close.
No, no, we got 20th, that's fine.
Yeah, November 20th, right. And then...
And if we need another one after that, we got December 18th.
Right. And hopefully, that could be delivered...
Wouldn't we need to direct him to draw a decision?
Yes, and...
And then we would have to have another meeting to accept that decision?
Depends on, well, yes. The point is what he and I agreed, and we would hope the board tonight would agree that, and there is enough time by December 31st to meet once or twice or even more to deliberate and have the decision written and filed with the town clerk by December 31st.
Yeah.
And we're in agreement with that.
Yeah.
So with that, you know, if there's a hearing on November 20th, again, maybe it could be closed. If you feel as though you need to keep it open, there is still time in December to have a hearing still open. You might, depending on when Mark gets the draft of the decision, you might be able to start looking at a hearing, I'm sorry, at the decision at, you know, the first or at least the second December date. And the schedule works because I did speak with him about that. And I think Gus Brown mentioned it, that Mark intends to speak to your consultants, you know, your peer review consultants, to get ideas of...
I'm fully aware of what I'm...
Right, to get ideas of conditions. And he told me two things. He's going to be away for two weeks on a vacation, but he might be reachable by phone, who knows? And so he's intending to have that meeting with the consultants the week of November 10th, which means, you know, he said that's, after that, he would start drafting. So, yes, I think that's plenty of time.
So that means we might have the decision to review on November 20th?
No.
Start and draft a little town. What do we got to do on, what do we got left here? We got, well, they're deliberating on here. Let me get, just move into some papers.
We're all set now, sorry.
They're all set? I'm waiting for you.
Yeah, November 20th.
Yeah.
Hopefully, I can get back to the Cape before midnight, but...
Tonight? Yeah, probably. There's no cars. You're a lawyer, you can defend yourself.
You mean speeding? No, I won't speed.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, with all that, I'll entertain a motion continues until November 24th.
November 20th.
November 20th, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, discussion hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 4th, 2025. Meeting minutes.
Thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. Is anybody here from 121 Grove Street? Are they online? They wait, and I want to lose them. Anybody there? All right, anyway, we've had a request from 121 Grove Street that they sent in finished plans. They got finished plans, they got to be reviewed by a peer reviewer. I got a call from a peer reviewer, $3,600. The board votes to approve that, and I'll have them get on. This is the final plans after they've been approved for a year. Now they're just getting ready to start construction, so they presented the plans. And he's got, he's got some...
Something we requested. We questioned that one. Part of the decision.
Yes, it was part of the decision. It was part of the decision. I thought it was part of the decision, requires inspection by Joe, too. I didn't see, and Mark thought that they were in the, he's going to, Casey sent them a copy of the decision, so he's going to, so he'll let us know. We already got a call for that anyway, so when the time comes. I just need a motion to ask the applicants Fairfield for $3,600 to have Hank Park Associates review the final plan for 121 Grove Street.
Okay, so we, we are not reviewing them.
We're not reviewing them.
We're just...
We're just following them. We're just getting the money so he can review it.
Got it. Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, none. See, Joe, I'm keeping, keeping you working anyway, you know. All right, we got September 25th, 2000, was it 25th?
Yeah, 25th. Make a motion to approve the minutes for September 25th, 2025.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, discussion hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Any hands up over there?
No.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, non-debatable. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.